Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask all my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. LoPara?
Present.
Mr. Metta? He'll be joining us later. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the School Committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFF CME, AFL-CIO Council 93, and affiliate local 230 cafeteria workers. To have this discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position and litigation strategy. The committee will return to public session at 5:30 PM. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, the superintendent, and the staff to walk off from this public session and join the executive session using the Zoom link set out by Ms. Sullivan. We will see you in a moment. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFF CME, AFF CIO, and Council 93, and affiliate local 230, better known as our cafeteria workers. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be broadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the October 26th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. You will now turn on the interpretation feature. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin, I wanted to give a brief update about our agenda. Due to ongoing discussions between all parties, the district is postponing the presentation on the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the cafeteria workers until a future meeting. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 12th School Committee meeting and October 13th retreat as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any, thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper. You're muted, Superintendent.
Sorry about that. So it's good to be here with all of you this evening. Today actually marks my one-month anniversary. And in, I'm really hopeful and just amazed as I go around to our schools, seeing just some of the great work that's happening around our district and, and you know, our children that just amaze me every day. It was a pleasure to see all of you at the Boston School Committee Retreat a few weeks ago, and I really enjoyed the conversation and seeing everyone in person for, for the first time. And just look forward to the next steps as we determine what those are to continue our work together. I appreciated having the, the space at that and the opportunity to frame out priorities that we're working toward as a district. And we're going to be looking at how those priorities map onto the strategic plan and certainly onto the school committee's current goals. And we'll be working with you either in retreat format or in public session at these meetings to kind of go through what we find. Just as kind of a reminder, the four folk, the six focus areas that I spoke about at the retreat that we are really trying to use as our blueprint for the, for the great work in the district and doing some resetting, prioritizing and accelerating academic performance. And again, we talked, we spoke a lot about equitable literacy as one of the vehicles or one of the main vehicles through which that's happening. Certainly strengthening access to social emotional learning. We talked about both resources in the schools, but also working with our students to develop those critical skills, developing authentic family and community engagement practices. This real critical piece of two-way dialogue with our families, our parents, our community to make sure that we're working together as partners, true partners in the work and taking feedback and recommendations. Certainly the, the safety of our classrooms for our students. And that is that our students feel safe physically and psychologically and have the appropriate kinds of facilities and learning spaces and academic spaces to really maximize the type of learning opportunity we want for all of our children. Streamlining our communications and, you know, really working hard on our internal and external communications so that our parents, our community really feel engaged and understand the work that we're trying to do. And that's both in circumstances of difficulty and also sharing really good news and practice. And then finally, the accountability pieces to the work, which is for us oriented around student outcome. And that will be our framing, you know, this year as we kind of undertake that blueprint and again, work with you to determine how that fits with the current school committee goals and the overall strategic plan for BPS. I spoke this morning at an event and I talked about, and I'm determined every time that I have an opportunity to speak to the public and to speak with you to really share good news, you know, and to share all of the wonderful things that happen in our school buildings, in our school classrooms that are happening every single day. This week alone, you know, we had an awesome STEM week. Thank you to all of the schools who hosted family nights throughout our district. I believe we had over 400 families attend and participate actively in the STEM activities. We also had over 500 families who came to the STEM College Career Fair at the Reggie Lewis Center on Saturday. And just a shout out to Marshall McGuinness, Mitchell, and to Elizabeth Maluski for leading the charge on these efforts. It's always a great undertaking, so important for our students to see what's possible when they're interested in STEM, what college and career can look like, and just a tireless amount of work by the team to get that to happen. Our BPS students also had the opportunity to visit Suffolk Construction and meet the Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor Polito, and to hear from professionals in STEM careers. So these were just all things that were going on across the city in our district relative to STEM. And it was, it was certainly a celebratory week. City Council also recognized, and I just want to give a tribute and a shout out to the team Jean-Louis, who was coach of the BPS Citywide Cross Country Program. The City Council did this at their week last meet, we, we, last weekly meeting. And then Council Mahia honored the coach's work with students with a City Council resolution. Her team has led the BPS students to achieve many accomplishments over the, over his career, including producing 60 citywide championships and three undefeated track and field seasons. So that's quite an accomplishment for both our coach and for our students. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak at a dinner that I know several school committee members were at for candidates for the Advestors School in the Move Award. This is always such a fun award, such a well-deserving award. And I'm, I'm always been thrilled that Advestors makes this investment in our schools. You know, this year's finalists, we had the Taylor School, Channing School, and the Gardner Pilot Academy. And I, I wish you could have heard the, the speeches of the, just the three outstanding leaders at those schools. I want to thank all of those leaders, you know, they, they, they more than qualified for the prize, particularly during a year coming off the pandemic. And they had just such pride and, in, in such love and joy for their schools, their school communities, their children, their staff. And so it just brought me a lot of pride as the superintendent to hear them, to speak about it. Today, I was present, as I know several of you were as well, to see the top prize go to the Gardner Pilot Academy. It's $100,000 prize. It's given to the school who spotlights the most notable school-wide improvement efforts that are happening across the BPS. And then we, we take effort with Advestors to document them and to spread those as best practice. And the Gardner, although all three schools were well-deserving, the Gardner won that top prize. And so we'll really be looking forward to working with them as they document their model, particularly around hub schools and hub community schools, and be able to share that out. So just congratulations again to, to the Gardner, to Principal Herman for her hard work and her community's hard work on a job well done. I also want to acknowledge exciting work that's happened in a new creative space at Boston Green Academy. And I would encourage school committee members to go over and see it when they're able. This is, it's an innovative classroom that is three years in the planning. It was renovated this past summer, and it now houses a beautiful new recording studio through with 3D printers, video editing equipment, and just really amazing new creative technology for students to use. It's already, according to, to our principal Matt Holzer, it's already the most popular space at BGA. It's opened, you know, really a door to new electives for the school, after-school programming. It showcases the talents of our students at BGA. And it was unique in that it was a project and a partnership that happened between BPS facilities, between BGA itself and its community, Turner Construction, and Gensler Architects. And so they designed the space together in a collaborative approach over three years and then built it out. In both Turner Construction and Gensler Architects, they adopted the school to do this pro bono project. So it just really underscores the value and the strength that when we have our, you know, business community and our nonprofits and our community-based works coming together, what's possible in our schools. Just very grateful for that partnership. And again, would encourage school committee to go over and make a visit when they're able. On the athletic scene, champions were crowned in the 2022 Boston Middle School Cross Country Championships. This is hosted by the Boston Athletic Association at Franklin Park. There were more than 300 of our middle school student athletes from 15 different city boss, the City of Boston schools that competed over a, a one-mile, 1.1 mile course on a perfect day for running in the fall. So just a couple of congratulations specifically to students who placed in their respective races. For the boys competition, the John D. O'Briens, Brandon Spies, Spice, Daniel Elliott, Daniel Lee from the Elliott, Josiah Bowen from the Edison, Tyler Green from the Elliott, Maziah Bowen from the Edison. And for the girls, it was an Elliott sweep at the top of the podium. Emery Durval.
Please slow down.
For the girls, it was an Elliott sweep at the top of the podium. We had Emery Durval, we had Gabrielle Dagg de Gain. Adele Shepherd finished a close 1-2-3 ahead of the field. And Nia Long for the John D. O'Brien and Daniela Manera from the Elliott. So just congratulations to all of our student athletes. You know, they put in so much hard work to get this to happen. And it's just wonderful to be able to see our middle school students really shine out on the track. Finally, just on the, the good news piece, I had the opportunity to travel with several of the school committee members to the Council of Great City Schools last week. And I really appreciated the opportunity to hear from other large urban districts like ours around the country to really learn about some of the best practices that are happening in academics, student support, family engagement, school safety. There were just so many different topics and workshops to attend. And so I just found, you know, it was, it was really eye-opening to hear about the level of practice that's happening and what we in Boston can learn from and also share. I also appreciated the time to dialogue with the school committee members who went, our chair as well, you know, just to have the opportunity to process with them what they saw, what I saw, and to talk about how it fits with Boston, how it fits with BPS. So I think there'll be some rich conversations going forward. And I am really looking forward with my team to using the Council of Great City Schools as one element of sharing practice and, and learning from, since they represent the large urban districts in the country. So that's our good news in each school committee meeting. I'm going to shout that out because there's just so much good that's happening in our schools and so much talent with our students. Proud of them all. Few updates on, on different reports. In your packet, yeah, you'll find the Wellness Policy Report that was produced by Director Carter and her team. The BPS District Wellness Council has submitted their required annual district wellness report for 2020-21. This report documents the goals and activities of the District Wellness Council and the recommendations shared to improve the implementation of the wellness policy. And this is really a key policy for us. The BPS Wellness Policy really provides a roadmap for creating a safe, healthy, and sustaining school environment. It's what we talk about. It's aligned with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and ASDC's whole school, whole community, whole child, which we talk about, model. And it really aims to promote the social, emotional, and physical health and wellness of all students to advance both their healthy development and readiness to learn. This is what we talk about with the whole child. And this report also has success stories from schools across the district that have been doing excellent work, caring for the health and well-being of their school communities, particularly during one of the most difficult school years during the pandemic. So I would encourage you all to, to read, to review. I know that Jill is here. Were there to be any questions on it? But I just want to thank her and her team for their diligent work in completing the report. I also, you know, I think that some of the stories that you'll read in the report really speak to, you know, what we talk about, about our students and our staff's perseverance through difficult times and just the care for the social, emotional, mental, and physical health and well-being of our learning communities. I mean, these are what make it possible to achieve our mission of making sure that every child in every classroom has what they need to succeed. And so we will be getting a more in-depth presentation on the, on the actual quantitative wellness policy implementation report for 2021-22. And they'll give that later in the year. So were there to be questions on this, Jill is here this evening. Otherwise, we'll be getting a more in-depth presentation on the full report, the comprehensive that includes the surveying and the quantitative later in the, the school year. Update on enrollment. I'd like to follow up. I know last week, several school committee members had specific questions around our actual enrollment. And so as of October 15th, in the BPS, we enrolled 48,734 students. And this did represent a continued decline, as we've seen for many years now, for the district. And it's, it's not unlike our other urban counterparts in the state and across the country. This represented a decline of about 587 students from the year before. The overall decline in student enrollment over the past decade, you know, is a further indicator and, and just requires us to, to structure our schools and programs to deliver high quality for our students who are in our schools today and those coming in, in the future, right? That is meeting the demand of our parents and our students who are of that age to attend. You know, our goal here is to create a district where all families and students feel excited. They feel confident to enroll here and to stay here. This is, this is our mission. You know, we want to, we want all students, especially our historically marginalized students, our Black and Brown students, our special education students, our English language learners, to know that they have a place here at BPS and that their education is going to, you know, we are taking that with the utmost seriousness and giving them every opportunity possible. And, you know, I think families want their students to access college and career. They want strong, rigorous academic pathways. They want facilities that support the education of the whole child. They want out-of-school opportunities to enrich their own students' experiences for their kids to graduate on time and to have lots of opportunities when they graduate. You know, our, our focus needs to be on the whole child, their physical, emotional, social, academic well-being and success. And our enrollment rate has declined, but that doesn't change that focus. You know, in reality, it's, it's our focus on delivering that high-quality set of experiences that's going to help us retain our students and it's going to help us to attract students and families coming back into the BPS. That is our hope. You know, we are without question resolute in that mission, our whole team. And we're committed to addressing the structural issues that exist, including the, the quality of the school buildings. You're going to hear about that tonight with the Green New Deal Initiative, offering equitable access to opportunities for all of our students, as you'll continue to hear throughout multiple types of presentations. You know, on a, on a somber note, decreased enrollment certainly impacts funding for the work. And, and ultimately, that is also going to require us to, to change how we deliver on our mission. But we're here for it. And, you know, it is the work of the district. It is the work of our city, and we're committed to doing it together. And before I move on from enrollment, I also wanted to share that the, the school choice season is coming, it's right around the corner. It's rapidly approaching. Starting in early November, families will be able to access via www.diskcoverbps.org to learn more about their particular school options. The school preview sessions, when families can tour schools, will also kick off next month. And I hope you'll all put down in your calendars for the annual showcase of schools, which is for the first time back in person. And we hope everybody will join us on Saturday, December 10th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at Boston Latin Academy, where you can visit many schools all under one roof to learn more about all of the offerings that are possible for you. So more to come on this special day as it gets closer. But we just want everybody to mark their calendars for December 10th, 9:00 to 1:00, Boston Latin Academy. That is a very, very important day, both in BPS and in our city. I did want to give a, a quick update on transportation, particularly transportation for students with disabilities. In particular, there was a communication that we received from Mass Advocates for Children, or what we call MAC. MAC had submitted a formal complaint through DESI's Problem Resolution System, the PRS. And this, this contained for a certain number of students, particular transportation issues, as well as an ask and recommendations by MAC for ways to go ahead and resolve or to solve those problems. Our Transportation Department head, Dell Sansasloss, you know, she met with MAC, several of the special education parents at that time, right, shortly after getting the letter. And then I met with them, again with Dell and some of our team on Monday of this past week. You know, I just want to reaffirm that we take every transportation issue involving any one of our students, but especially our special education students with a, with a sense of gravity. You know, we had a productive meeting. I, I, I feel like we're moving toward resolution on a number of the systemic issues that were raised. Some of the issues are technical and they're easier to solve. There are some that are harder, they're more adaptive, and they really do require us to work kind of cross-sector, particularly around tiering with our charter partners and our, our parochial partners that also use our transportation, that we're required to transport. And so we're beginning to have some of those critical conversations, certainly in partnership with DESI. But I did want to reassure both the school committee and the public that we are taking, you know, the, the problems that were presented seriously and working very, very hard to resolve them, both short-term and long-term. You know, every day, that transportation team works to address any student-specific transportation issue. And more importantly, they really try to communicate with families in a timely way about that resolution. We know how difficult the, the transportation issues are for our families and, you know, and the inconvenience and the barrier it presents. And we're committed to resolving each and every one of them. You know, we appreciate DESI's partnership, recommendations. We'll continue to work to identify areas of how to improve our own system for all students, but particularly for our students with disabilities. Additionally, we will be, a court, you know, as per our SIP, we'll be getting a, a council report back from the Council of Great City Schools. And that will be, come back in December on transportation. We look forward to that report. We will look forward to any help or recommendations that might inform our policy decisions that need to move forward in, within the district and certainly to school committee. So we'll have more to come on that for sure. Green New Deal tonight, you know, presentation for this, just a, you know, reaffirmation that Boston Public Schools is committed, you know, partner with the City of Boston in the Green New Deal. This is initiative that will build upon the Quality Guarantee Framework that BPS has been advancing for the past few years and is included in the budget. We're really fortunate to have a mayor and a city government that's willing to provide this level of financial support for our school buildings to improve them, to ensure that those buildings are such that they support the academic vision and opportunities that we want for each of our children. The quality school, the quality guarantee is, is basically our promise to our students and families that one day, every school in every neighborhood will provide a standard of excellence and high quality. And the baseline of services across all schools is nothing less than what parents expect and frankly, what our students deserve. The investment will, from the Green New Deal, will create classrooms that promote learning, support our vision and plan for grade reconfigurations, establish more predictable pathways for families and students, and ensure that these projects are equitably distributed through a transparent community process. It's a vision to leverage Boston's creativity as a, as a community and a city. And it's, it's, it represents our passion to reimagine our schools really as full-service community hubs that can adapt to meet all of the needs as they evolve of our students and city over time and into the future. It's also a commitment to safeguarding climate resilience, you know, of our school buildings. And, you know, in, just for perspective, but those make up, you know, like when we think about building emissions, about half of the city's building emissions. So this is really critical to the future climate of our city as well. And it's a pledge to listen to and, and really try to rebuild the trust with our communities that, you know, have spoken about again and again. BPS students and families, you know, who they've been asking and calling for change. And now change is here, and it's here in a really formidable way with the Green New Deal. Later tonight, you're going to hear more about this in detail in terms of the report. But I did just want to, you know, again, just remind us how important the Green New Deal is to the work that we intend to do, both in the immediate both in the immediate future and the long-term future for our schools. Um COVID update. Uh certainly wanna just give a big shout out and thank you to the Boston Health Commission. They continue to just be such a steadfast steadfast partner for us. Um we meet with them on a daily basis uh and they really just continue to help us to monitor COVID nineteen and community metrics, school data, um always giving feedback and and always there as a a partner and to collaborate. Um as we enter the fall and the winter season, we expect that the spread of COVID nineteen and, you know, other respiratory illness, the flu, R RSV, I think we've we've all heard um you know, uh that these are circulating and we expect it to increase with the with the winter months coming. Um we're gonna continue to stress to be vigilant, uh hand hygiene, uh respiratory etiquette, uh staying home if you feel sick. We just sent messaging out about this a day or two ago. Um it's important to note that, you know, for anyone listening, if you're experiencing any kind of COVID nineteen-like symptoms, flu-like symptoms, um you know, RSV symptoms, stay home, you know, stay home. Um a negative test doesn't mean, you know, that you don't have another kind of respiratory illness that's going on. So if you're feeling sick or your child's feeling sick, we wanna make sure staff and students, um you know, really, really stay home, take care of themselves and make sure that they don't continue to spread uh whatever whatever illness they have. So um you know, and and Boston Health Commission always reminds us to please make sure you see your health provider if you're feeling ill. The question I'm asking, you know, masking's not mandatory. Uh BPS and and Boston Health Commission continue to strongly encourage students and staff to wear the masks indoors. Um wearing a mask certainly helps to slow the spread of any of the illnesses. Um and that would be also flu, that would be RSV. Um schools have plenty of masks available in all kinds of sizes, adult, children's. Um so you can get any of those supplies that you need from your local school. Um we're also encouraging, and I I've been really pleased with families um participating in this. Um you know, we we purchased um many tests, it you know, as a way to be able for the rapids to ensure that families could test and were asked them to on either Sunday night or Monday morning before they go to school. Um you know, we're gonna continue to follow the COVID nineteen guidance from the Health Commission. Um we remain committed to using data to drive the decision-making, adjust policies, you know, in response to any changes we see. We track any kind of um you know, if we see any clusters, we track those. Uh we're constantly working with the schools around sending notifications um or requiring masks if there is a cluster. Uh so we're really trying to use the data to be vigilant and on a daily basis um responsive. So I I, our goal is to keep everybody safe and and as healthy as possible and in school and in session. Um NAEP, I know that uh many of you uh saw some of the uh press releases around NAEP. On Monday of this week, the results were um released. Just as a reminder, um the twenty twenty-two NAEP was, is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. Uh it's known um in some circles as the nation's report card. Uh you know, it's it's really uh gives us a a pulse on the reading and the math assessments um that are nationally and 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 how the uh the nation's, particularly the large urban districts um are doing on those results. Um we administered, uh as do other districts, sample representation from fourth and eighth grade. Um and this includes like across the nation, states, twenty-six large urban districts uh like ourselves that also administer it. And that all took place in the spring of last year in twenty twenty-two. Um this marks the first administration of the assessment since two thousand and nineteen before the COVID pandemic. So um I think, you know, it's showing a a multi-year trend. In Boston, there were around thirty-six hundred students who participated in the spring test of twenty twenty-two NAEP. Um since two thousand and nineteen, the the BPS's results in reading have remained steady, um which differs statistically significant um which differs from the statistically significant declines that experienced, that were experienced at both state and national level. Um in math, on a scale of zero to five hundred, um the district experienced significant decline of seven and nine scale points, to just give you a sense, um in the fourth and the eighth grade. Um this is consistent with the significant declines that we saw in state and national levels in math. Um and you know, while it's true that the pandemic, and I said this in in, you know, I said this in the in the press release, but while the pandemic has had an impact on students' academic performance and social emotional well-being, our opportunity gaps have been widening for our black and brown children here in Boston, for our children with disabilities and our multilingual students when we compare them to peers for many years. Um it is true that, you know, there's been some progress here and there, but there has been this uh significant decline. And so, you know, achievement gaps from perspective have almost doubled um for black students in fourth grade reading and math and for Hispanic students in eighth grade reading and math. Um achieving gaps for students with disabilities and multilingual learners are also persistent. Um the gaps we see for all of these groups are similar to what is seen across the nation and within Massachusetts. Um however, these results are reminders that there's so much work here to be done to address the learning needs of all BPS students and particularly our students, our black and brown students, our special education and our multilingual learners. Um so we we are dissecting those, we're looking at those results. Um teams are working on them and we will be, you know, looking at our academic strategies um both for intervention and to ensure that students are getting access to that grade-level content um that is just so critical um every day in every classroom through equitable literacy and um through equivalent math kinds of uh programming. Uh finally, uh for my report, in terms of the SIP, I just wanted to update, you know, the systemic improvement plan continues. Earlier in October, we posted two senior leadership positions in special education, Chief of Special Education and the Special Advisor for Special Education. Um the two positions are gonna work in partnership with each other and they'll be part of my executive team. Uh the Senior Advisor is going to be focused on implementing the recommendations from the Council of Great City Schools report, which will be presented to School Committee at the November sixteenth meeting. The Chief of Special Education will lead the Office of Special Special Education and will work on implementing operational improvements. Um we felt raising that position to a chief level was appropriate, given the significant importance of our special education office to our families and to our students um with IEPs. So we're working to really ensure we have a strong candidate. We're going out in the search for both positions. Um and we're encouraging anyone interested in applying to submit their application online. You can find that at uh our bostonpublicschool.org site and it's under the Human Capital um area. And then uh finally, next week, we will present our first quarterly update on transformation schools at the next Wednesday School Committee meeting. Chair, I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um we can get down, wait a second. Um I I just wanted to reiterate what you said around um going to the Council of Great City Schools. Um some of you know that both Rafa and I participated this past year, the last nine months in cohorts around training as a board chair and as new board member. A lot of that work focused around us becoming a much more school committee focused on student outcome-focused um governance. Um we've done a lot of work of thinking over this past year with all the churn that's been going on. Some of you know that we had started this work when um back a couple of years ago. Um and we did have one session when we began to talk about the um goals and the values of the school committee. And now we have a number of different goals that we're looking at. But more importantly, what we wanna be able to do is to begin to take a look at how we go about doing our work. We started that briefly at our retreat a couple of weeks ago, but knew that we were going off to this training and wanted to wait till we came back together to really sit down together to look at how we can change our structure of our meetings and look at our agendas so that we are spending much more of our time looking at student outcomes. Um all of the, all of the agenda items that come before us are important. But the most important work that is the work of the school board is to really focus on student outcomes. And so over the next several meetings and as we move through this year, we are gonna be looking at ways we may be adjusting our agendas, the structure to our um meetings and also our own meetings, our own meeting um behaviors within our meeting. One of the the major things they talked to us a lot about is our meetings really should be no no more than two hours in length. If we are doing all of the work in preparation and any number of things, you know, I don't think we've ever had a meeting that's been less than four hours. And we said in our retreats that, you know, people were really not happy with our structure. So that it's gonna mean that we're gonna have to do a lot of our work also in thinking about how we can be more efficient and how can we work with the district so that more of what is coming before us is really about um student outcomes. So this is work that we're hoping to share with you to bring in other trainers from the Council of Great City Schools to work with us so that as a board, particularly given what we've just heard about the NAEP scores, what we know about the MCAS scores, what we have struggled with forever, closing achievement gaps is the number-one goal that Boston Public Schools has talked about for years. Um a lot of our work works towards that. We very rarely talk about it directly that we're trying to, we are focusing on the achievement gaps, particularly around our black and brown students, our special ed students, our bilingual stu-, multilingual students and all, but we need to keep naming it and focusing it. And I'm hoping that by focusing our time together on really looking at the outcomes and really digging deep in the district around what it is that we are doing so that we won't be looking at scores again and just keep keep moving forward, but that we will really begin to understand what it is that we are doing in this district that is really making the difference and how we can grow it so that at the end of the year, we really will be proud of the abilities that we've had to to close gaps. So this saying this upfront that I'm gonna be pushing back. Um they tell us that, you know, this meeting is our meeting, school board meeting. We need to look at the agendas of this meeting and we need to make sure that we are gonna move towards trying to have fifty percent of our time be focused on actually looking at the outcomes of our students so that we can make Boston be one of the best urban school districts that they can be. So you'll be hearing more from Rafa. Um Rafa was a superstar at this meeting and um has had, has has learned a lot about this work, has really spoken to the importance of parents, um parents in all the ways that parents can be part of this and also wants to work with, making sure that all of our members are brought up to speed about this work and to be able to get you all engaged in it well. So we really see this as a new day for us um in terms of really focusing on our students to move our district forward. So that I wanna thank Superintendent for report and open it up for everyone for their comments, questions. And we wanna try to start our new discipline also. Um let's try to have one round of questions for this. And if you have other questions, if we can get them in writing so that the superintendent can re- respond to them either over the week or at our next meeting, since we have a meeting right next week.
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yeah, it's your hand. Yeah. Ms. Palanco Garcia. And then Mr. Al, and then Dr. Alkins. And Mr. Cardette Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quiero eh eh agradecer realmente esa oportunidad de poder estar, haber estado nueve meses y recibiendo este taller sobre gobernanza con el Council of Great City Schools.
I want to really thank you um for the great opportunity that I had being part of this uh nine-month workshop, which, from which I learned so much.
I can hear you, Gabriela.
Can you hear me now? You couldn't hear me before? Okay, um I want to thank you really for the great opportunity that I had of being part of this a nine-month workshop. I learned so much. Rafa, me escuchas?
She's not hearing you.
Hello, Gabriela?
Rafa?
Yeah, ah, okay. Me pueden escuchar?
Yeah, ellos me escuchan.
Ah, okay, okay.
No, no sé qué pasó con tu video, con tu audio.
Oh, okay.
Ya lo dije dos veces.
Okay, okay. En estos nueve meses que tuvimos en el entrenamiento, eh la señora Robinson y yo, a a mí me sirvió bastante porque pude aprender mucho sobre el verdadero rol que debe tener un miembro del comité eh eh para hacer eh su trabajo, para el rol, para el comité, cuáles son las responsabilidades, cómo debe enfocar sus metas.
Um I learned through this training that I took with Miss Robin, Mrs. Robinson um about the role that the school committee members and should have their responsibilities and goals.
Pero sobre todo, aprendí que nosotros tenemos que enfocarlo en el resultado de los estudiantes.
But overall, I learned that we have to really concentrate on the students' outcomes.
Que podamos, que nuestros estudiantes puedan graduarse, que esa es la meta.
That we have to make possible for our students to graduate. That's our goal.
Empujar que nuestros estudiantes aprendizan del idioma inglés y los aprendizan del idioma inglés con capacidad, empujar que tengan planes sostenibles.
That there are sustainable plans for our students, um English learners and English learners with disabilities.
Hubo la oportunidad de compartir con distintos distritos educativos y y aprendimos muchas cosas de esos distritos, cómo ellos están implementando planes que son interesantes para que lo conozcamos aquí en Boston.
Um I had the opportunity to share with different edu- educative districts and to know about uh some plans that could be implemented here in Boston.
También puedo eh quiero compartir con ustedes que fui la única hispanohablante que estuvo en todo el proceso del entrenamiento y ellos eh eh pusieron un intérprete para mí que estaba eh consecutivo y también simultáneo.
I also wanted to share with you that I was the only Spanish speaker uh in the training and I um I was um assigned uh simultaneous and a consecutive interpreter for it.
Y valoraron mucho que Boston esté incluyendo dentro del del comité una persona con que que no habla fluido, es que no habla fluido inglés y que sea parte del comité de las escuelas públicas.
They also valued a lot uh the fact that Boston has a committee member who is not fluent in English and that is um a person who needs interpretation.
Nosotros, con mi mi posición allí, hice mucho pensar a muchos superintendentes que realmente para tú poder tener el acceso al idioma y el acceso a diferentes nacionalidades que hay, debes promover la interpretación.
With my position there, I really made them think how important it is to include interpretation, to have access uh to people for from other languages.
Incluso algunos superintendentes que dentro de sus reuniones no tienen interpretación, lo hicimos pensar que es necesario que tengan interpretación para que esas comunidades que no hablan inglés puedan estar presentes escuchando su idioma.
Some superintendents uh who didn't used to have their meetings with interpretation realized that um it is important to include interpretation for those people who don't speak English, be able to participate in their languages.
Y valoré mucho que muchos se acercaban a mí y me hablaban español. Y decían, yo hablo español, Rafa, pero yo eh eh yo hablo español pero no pienso que debo usarlo, pero tú me has hecho pensar que debemos usar el español también si lo si lo hablamos.
I valued a lot also the fact that many people approached me and spoke to me in Spanish and they said, Rafa, I don't normally- Rafa, I don't normally speak in Spanish, but you made me realize how important it is to do that.
Entonces debemos seguir promoviendo ese acceso al idioma.
We have to continue promoting the access to the language.
Enfocarnos en los resultados de los estudiantes, ver los números, cuál es el porcentaje, por qué los aprendices del idioma inglés tienen tan poco porcentaje, cómo podemos nosotros influir, influenciar para que esto aumente y que haya más graduados.
I, I need, we need to concentrate in the student, in students' outcomes, in the numbers. We have to look at the percentages. We have to look at the reasons why the percentages in English learners are so low and what we can do to increase those percentages and to help with that, to get more students to graduate.
En ese sentido, tengo una pregunta para la superintendente.
And in that regard, I have a question for the superintendent.
Agradezco mucho su, su presentación de la noche de hoy.
I appreciate a lot your presentation tonight.
Entonces, en los estudiantes de cuarto y octavo grado, pude ver en la gráfica que han tenido una baja significativa en las calificaciones, en los resultados finales.
I've noticed that the students in fourth and eighth grade had a really big decrease in their reports, in the numbers.
Qué planes tiene ella y su equipo para aumentar este porcentaje? Sé que ella habló de estrategias académicas, pero los estudiantes necesitan un plan en lo inmediato porque sabemos que el COVID trajo muchas deficiencias académicas a nuestros niños.
So I would like to know what plans do you have along with your team to bring those percentages up? I know that you spoke about academic strategies, but we need really long-term results.
Thank you. Thank you, Rafa. So through your chair, so I'm going to actually ask Linda and Farah to talk specifically, I think the OMME strategic plan speaks to some of the work that we intend to do with our English language learners around kind of targeted intervention. And then Linda, I know on the equitable literacy, if you can speak to that as well, particularly for our multilingual learners who are in levels three and above.
So thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Ms. Polanco Garcia, for your leadership as well. When we looked at the slides this evening from the NAEP results, it is very sobering to see the widening disparities in achievement. And the conversation tonight is similar to the one that we had last time about MCAS. These data tell us how urgent it is for us to ensure that our students have access to grade level reading and writing and math. When they don't have that, they cannot meet those requirements. And that is something that we are very focused on. While we know that all of our students have not been getting regular access to grade level learning, we also know that we need to provide all the supports for students in various entry points so that they can do grade level work and get the supports that they need. Some of what we are doing is called multi-tiered systems of support. And at the Council of the Great City Schools conference, there were many sessions about that. And in particular, there was a session about that with our multilingual learners and ensuring that we have the use of home language as instruction, whether it is a dual language program or transitional bilingual program or a heritage language program. It is so critical to our students' success, especially our multilingual learners, if we are able to provide that home language support. And that is part of what is in the plan that was shared last time also. And I regret that it was so late that everyone didn't benefit from hearing Farah talk about that plan. So I want to just make sure we pivot over to her and think, and be considerate of time. I'm not sure if she was able to be admitted to the room, but what I would just say on her behalf is the team has worked very hard to make sure that we have a process to increase the number of bilingual programs across the city. And what she shared was that it's a multi-year process. But what's really critical is to be able to engage, and I'm glad that we have families listening in this evening and community members because it's important for us to work alongside you to make sure that we have these programs in place and also make sure that we have the teachers hired to be able to provide this type of high-quality instruction to our families. But in short, what we are doing every day, led by Chief Eccleston, Dr. Eccleston, and our school superintendents is making sure that we work alongside our school leaders and our teachers to make sure there is grade-level culturally and linguistically responsive tasks, things that they are doing every day to learn and to be able to read, write, and do math at grade level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Alkins and then Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Thank you for the presentation. Always good to hear an update. And I have several questions, but try to stratify it into this four categories. The first is related to just checking in, you know, my thoughts and prayers still are extended to the communities that have been affected particularly by the recent school shootings, but also sort of the, the, the community violence that we've seen in, in an uptick. So I'm actually curious as to have we checked in with those communities? If so, like what is their state? How have they been faring in that? And so sort of a socioemotional check-in with those communities. That's the first thing. The second is sort of related to the presentation on transportation, but particularly what has been the feedback that we've received about the Problem Resolution Center? Has that been an effective tool and strategy for family members and communities to engage? And what levels of feedback have you been getting on how to improve that process? Third, also thinking about like the Green New Deal, this is just a more or less a comment of, as we're starting to talk more in depth about where these renovations are starting to take place, it would also be beneficial for the public to see a timeline that actually coincides with when will these changes affect them? And when possibly they'll, they'll, they should expect to see them, if they expect to see them at all. I know this is going to be a very lengthy process, so that's just more of a comment. And then last, because we're talking about opportunity gaps, you know, I, before I joined the committee, I'm thinking about particularly one of the plans that are presentations that was made to align sort of the Office of Opportunity Gaps with the 2025 Strategic Plan or the Imagine Plan. And I'm just curious, like after seeing the data, has there been any amendments to our strategy? Has there been any sense of the success of the racial equity planning tools? How has that changed like with, with this new data? I know it's, I know people are committed to it every day, so it's hard to think about that. But, you know, receiving updates about the, the success or the failures of it, you know?
Sure. So through, through your chair, so, so first of all, thank you for, for the three questions and the comment. I think the Green New Deal comment, we'll make sure that our team takes that to include. So yesterday, we had a meeting with the mayor, the police commissioner, and the faith-based communities. I think it was a very powerful meeting. I, I can speak for the school side to say I appreciated the space because more and more our schools are being impacted, not just by violence that happens in our school, but by violence that happens around our school. This week alone, we had schools four times in safe modes for situations that were happening in the community that were around. And, you know, whether it's students walking to school, whether it's students in nighttime activities or over the weekends, whether it's an older person that gets shot or killed, that might be their uncle, their aunt, or they're related, their parent. Our students are carrying all of that in, in the doors, you know, every day. So we have a, we have a very, I would say like a really well-oiled way of handling situations that starts with really good communication that we're working on with the city so that we, we're included and we find out about incidences that happen outside of school time that then impact and that we need to respond to. In each of these cases, and I'll ask Chief Kelton to come on for this, but in each of these cases, we have a protocol that we go through and we support that community, whether it's a student immediately in the community or whether it's a family member of someone in the community or a staff member. And we support that community from kind of start to finish, often in conjunction with some of the other city agencies. So I'm just going to ask Chief Kelton to kind of give an example of when something happens at a school, what our response has been, but to reassure that it's always in support of that school until that school community is at a point of stability. Chief Kelton?
Yes, so we've developed really strong partnerships with our community-based partners, both through the Boston Public Health Commission and then also with our area hospital trauma response teams. So when there is a crisis in the community, the notification happens pretty swiftly for us. So we can then triage the situation, not just ourselves or their social work team, but also in collaboration with city teams, with the neighborhood trauma team, through the Boston Public Health Commission, with Boston Trauma Response, with the street workers from BCYF. And we're able to huddle up quickly to create a wraparound plan where we're able to bring in both internal and external supports into schools to support not just our students, but also the staff, and then extend those supports beyond the school building and into the community to also support families. So we've been continuing to strengthen that relationship and continuing to solidify that structure. So now school leaders know that those supports are there for them and how BPS is becoming part of, you know, it's a community crisis response. And, and it's worked seamlessly. It also, what works well about it too is that we have that response in the summer through work that our social workers are able to do over the summer and our district social workers that are new positions this year. So they're able to, in our regional model and our network model, to respond with our operational leaders, with our school superintendents, to provide on-the-ground support. And then we're also able to pull on other social workers throughout the district and school psychologists to support that school community. And again, we do that in collaboration with our city partners through both the mayor's office. The Boston Medical Center is a partner that we often use. They receive most of the juvenile trauma victims. So we have a strong partnership with them and communicating with their advocates to ensure that proper communication and not over-communication is happening with the victims' families. What we don't want to do is insert ourselves into situations where we are re-traumatizing any students or family members. So we're also very cognizant of that in our preparation and in our response efforts.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going for the problem resolution. I would say that this, this is, us systemizing this process has been really critical for us because not only does it help us to resolve more timely, but it helps us to track the type of, the type of issues that we're seeing and be able to kind of get to root cause on them. But I am going to our Chief of Staff, Valdez Shell, if you could, I know you've been working directly with PRS, just kind of give an update to Dr. Alkins.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So I just, I wanted to just clarify one quick thing. So PRS is actually the Problem Resolution System Center that is out of DESI. And how that works is that they handle complaints that allege a school or a district is not meeting legal requirements for education. At the district level, what that looks like is we receive that complaint and between our PRS coordinator, so we have a PRS coordinator at the district, we also have a PRS paralegal at our district, they work together along with the departments where the complaint is alleged, to gather the information around what the complaint was. We also communicate with either the school, the family, and all together we work with, with gathering the data to then get a resolution. So that's, that's how we use the PRS in our district. We also then have the helpline, which is, I think, the, what we're really pushing for families to, to use for, for just reaching out to, to, to our departments. If there's a complaint with transportation, it immediately goes over to transportation. If there's something related to academics, it gets transferred over to academics and someone from the academics teams responds. So that is actually one of, one of the, the flows that we're creating for families to access, I'm so sorry, to access, to access our, our district with any complaints or issues that they may have. So I just wanted to make that clarification between PRS and the helpline.
Yeah. And we're really trying to encourage our parents to use the helpline because it's the quickest way for us to be able to know about the issue and to resolve it. There are times that it goes straight to the state and that's the PRS piece, and then it comes back to us in a different way. But that can take a little bit of time, whereas if parents just call the hotline, you know, we're able to kind of hop on it. So it will pull the data too for September, October, to be able to look at how often it's being used, what's the response time for how long it took us to resolve it? That's, this is all the statistics that we want to look at to make sure that our response is timely. Okay, and then the, the last question I'm going to ask Chief Branson to weigh in on and to talk a little bit about the racial equity planning tool.
Good evening. Thanks, Superintendent Skipper, and thanks for the question, Dr. Alkins. So we're currently in the process of looking at DESI data and NAEP data. And as we continue to get feedback from families in schools of finalizing goals and work plans that are aligned to the strategic plan. And we begin this work in July, and so someone might say, hey, it's why, why are we doing this so late in the process? We built in a structured time this year to make sure that we had an opportunity to align this year's work to Superintendent Skipper's priorities. And so as a part of that process, every department across the district, we have 53 departments, develop work plans, and as a part of developing those work plans, they use the racial equity planning tool. And so it has been a work in progress. It's a, it's a muscle we're continuing to try to develop as a team. But what I'm excited about, and as Superintendent Skipper mentioned in her priorities, I think it was priority six around accountability, we've recommitted as a team to holding ourselves accountable and look forward to the school committee and superintendent holding us accountable to getting those racial equity planning tools to a point where we have a racial equity analysis. We publish it online and we're about 80% along the way in actually getting ready to publish a RPT dashboard. And so we're, we're, you know, we're, we're right there. And Superintendent Skipper has pushed us to say there's a lot that we've done to get to 80%. Now we need to score the goal.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Thank you for the report, Superintendent Skipper. I have a few questions too. I guess I'll start to just sort of pulling back the earlier conversation also about the Council for Great City Schools. I am hopeful as we are thinking, Chair, too, about the sort of structure and what we're doing here and how we make this a really meaningful and productive space. That maybe even in part of it, there is a conversation around the relationship with the council and that they do great work, but they've also been working with us for a long time in different ways. And so I think there is a healthy moment for And so I think there is a healthy moment for us to analyze, like, are we getting what we need? Uh, cause there are other places we could be looking for, for uh continuous support. And as we have a relationship with them around the work we're doing with D E S I and the analysis there, and they've supported us in other efforts, I'm assuming around this body, I just, you know, I'm always, I think in education specifically, like, I'm always mindful of just like a profit. And like that there are other places for us to look for support where we need it. Um, and so I'd just be remiss as a member of this body if I didn't say it. And it's, it's no slam to the work that they do, just a recognition that they are one of many people doing lots of great work, and we can do inventory around if the work we've done with them has felt like it's actually changed outcomes here in Boston. And uh if so, great, let's keep doing it. And if not, let's keep analyzing what could be uh another support that could help us uh generate improvement. Um, but to questions, I wanna ask a question, um, specifically around enrollment, Superintendent. Uh, you know, I've, I've been asking that number, and I know it takes a beat to get it. I have watched that, you know, in other cities I've been in as well. Um. I'm curious, you know, before you were here, there was conversations during the budget process in which we were sometimes, I think, in misalignment around the projected enrollment and its relationship to budget projections. And I'm just curious, as we're building this relationship, like, how do you put your, how do you wrap your head around uh continuous decrease, accurate projections? And then how that sort of interplays with a budget that we eventually have to right-size? Um, as we're holding so many schools harmless, obviously, for the cliff. And so like the question's complicated, but it's not. It's like a sort of reconciliation around the trend. Uh, a maybe honest moment of like, this is a gonna be continuous until we have a pretty drastic intervention, and that intervention might be increased performance outcome that drives families back into the system. Uh, as well as other issues like affordable housing and all those other things, right, that like are outside of your purview, but are part of a much bigger citywide. Um, and so I'm curious, like, as we're part of this governing body, what can, how does this shape your thinking? As we will sooner than not be moving into budget season and thinking about the next fiscal year?
Yeah, so I mean, this is, it's a, as you said, uh, it's a, it's a long uh comprehensive question. And yet, like, there is a cut through to it. Um, you know, I think, um, although decline, right, there is some predictability to the decline, right, because we see years of trends. So we can sort of see what, where it's going down in what areas. Um, I do think that um the pandemic did shift a little bit of that in terms of the population of student and who was declining. Um, but in, you know, we, we can give some predictability to it. I think the challenge for us, particularly in our M L E programming and our special education programming, and I'll tap in. You know, Nate and some other folks that, that, you know, do this more regularly, but my layperson, um, uh, analysis of this from being here. Uh, in those programs, we don't reach high watermark at the beginning of the school year. So what we report for October Sims is not necessarily how those programs will grow. So those tend to be a bit harder to predict, and so they tend to be a little bit more volatile when we predict them, if we're off the mark on them. Um, there's also something to be said in the weighted student formula where we aren't able to, you know, if you have half of a class that you're predicting in a particular, say, special education area, you, you can't have half of a teacher. So you have to, you have to build it by capacity because you're funding it by a teacher, by that capacity. So there's always gonna be some wiggle room um between what's actual enrollment of, in October for the Sims. What is high watermark, and then what we need to project in order to properly fund. Um, and, and I'll let Nate tap in and, and correct me, uh, you know, in any of that. Um. I think additionally, uh, you know, this is the, the, this is sort of the, the part I spoke about, which is as we think about the Green New Deal, as we think about reconfiguration. You know, we have to make some decisions around, to base that around the soft landing issues because they are taking, you know, like, it's fifty, it's a lot of money that we're spending in soft landings to still give watered-down services to smaller groups of students. Whereas when you have economy of scale and you can combine some of that, us, for a student's perspective, they're able to get just a much richer experience with more services because you've kind of hit that economy of scale. So I think that's gonna be one of the strategies that we sort of have to hit through enrollment with this. Um, you know, and it is gonna be this cut through, you know, to get there. Um, Nate, I don't know if you want to uh correct, or, you know, if there's anything additional to add um, on the, on um the question around the difference between the actual enrollment, the projections, and the weighted student formula budget?
Um, thank you Superintendent Nate Cooter, Chief Financial Officer. And um for anyone who's sort of new to this, I would just add that the Planning and Analysis Team, which handles our enrollment projections, reports to finance. So um if it's not entirely clear why the CFO would be answering questions on enrollment projections, um, that's why. I'll say that this was part of a, a reorganization that happened um six or eight years ago um to increase the transparency and accuracy of our enrollment projections because it um, it had begun, become such a problem for us as a district. Um, there does seem to be a bit of an emerging narrative that our enrollment projections are far off on an annual basis. And I just, I would say that I don't think that's true. I think what um Superintendent pointed out is, it's a misunderstanding of what our enrollment projections tell us. And for any given school, grade, and program, what we're trying to do is estimate the number of students that we will see at peak enrollment so that we build enough capacity to serve those students when they arrive. And what we wanna make sure is that we're both not over-projecting and building too much capacity and under-projecting, and therefore sort of shorting schools, the funding that they would get through weighted student funding, if we had been more accurate. What you'll see is that the number of schools, grades, and programs where we are within a margin of error of a plus or minus three percent on any given year is, is fairly high. And I would um love the opportunity, as we think about um future conversations, would love the opportunity to kind of go in more detail, cause I could, I could talk about enrollment projections for hours. And we're now at the point where we are talking about enrollment projections um for hours. And um, and so I would say that in this, the one thing that has made enrollment projections more difficult has been the global pandemic reactions to immigration policy and changes in English learner that, that we could not anticipate, but I don't think that's for lack of skill. I don't think any of us could have um anticipated a, a large and external event like that. But um, I'll keep my answer uh already not brief enough, but uh look forward to future conversations. You're right, we're about to launch into F Y twenty-four budget planning, so we'll hang out again soon.
Right, and I hope it would, by no means was I, was I questioning any skill around it. But I think, to your point, this is a complex issue. And my understanding is peak enrollment is now. Like, m- most school systems have peak enrollment at the end of October. Like, that is when we see the most bodies. That could be a pre-COVID conversation. So the idea of peak enrollment could change, particularly as we're thinking about ways to address chronic absenteeism. Um, but I, I, so I, I hear what you're saying. And then at the same time, like, my understanding is a projection should also be offering schools clarity around how many classrooms they should open for individual students. Particularly our most marginalized students, students with disabilities and non-native English speakers. And so while it is a budget exercise, it is also an instructional planning tool. And I think both can be true, but the, 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 the commitment to precision is incredibly important as a former school principal, uh, cause I can't, i- it is just as hard to have a shortage of kids as it is to have an overage of kids. And it makes, it creates new complex problems around programming. And so there is a commitment on a financial level, obviously, and, you know, for us to have accurate projections be, because it allows us to distribute resources to the right place. But it's also a commitment on a, to our school leaders, to offer them accurate projections so that we are able to help them plan accordingly. And so I'm just curious, and again, it's not like a, a judgment of skill. It is just much more about like, as we're watching the numbers change and we're seeing new trends in the ways that our school system looks and feels. I- is there a change in thinking that's starting to come around how we'll look at projections next year? And maybe that's true, or maybe it's like, this is the best we can arrive at right now, and we're gonna keep sort of business as usual. Um, but I know, and you'll remember, Mr. Cooter, like, this was one of the questions I was asking during the budget process. I think we estimate, we projected over forty-nine thousand kids, uh, and here we are, right? So that's my thought.
Yeah, um, and thank you for that. I think you're absolutely right. The, the importance here is, you know, both symbolically and practically, our budget process starts by understanding the profile of students that we're gonna serve, uh, the demographics, the programmatic needs. I'll just add that while total enrollment may peak in October, um, enrollment for any given student subgroup may change throughout the year. And the easiest example of that is early childhood special education, where we have a, a obligation to serve students as, as soon as they turn three years old. Um, students turn three years old throughout the year, and so if we build capacity only for the number of students who will be in an early childhood substantially separate program that in October, we would significantly under-count. So we project that demographic group um as a June enrollment. And so when you total it up, um, the, the total projected number that you'll see in weighted student funding is never gonna match the October number. It's never gonna match the number at any point in the year. And that's specifically for the reason that you're talking about. We wanna make sure that we have the capacity and the plans for the students um, when they arrive. And, and, you know, each demographic group, each um, each population with their shifting enrollment numbers um, mean different things for us total. At one point, and I can look up this number, but at one point, the total number of students that we've served in any given year, when you consider all the students that start the year and then exit, and the students who come later in the year, is an additional twenty or thirty percent of students. So something like, if you have fifty thousand students, something like sixty-five or seventy thousand students are gonna come through the Boston Public Schools at one point. That's an indication of how highly mobile of a district we are and how the changing profiles um emerge. And so that makes it very complicated. Um, and I, I would say we are always looking for new methods. Um, pre-pandemic, we were starting a partnership with the Boston Planning and Development Agency to get the mayor's housing plan so that we knew how many houses were coming online to change our demographic projections. They've been incredibly helpful for us to understand that this is um not as much about a response to B P S, but as an overall um demographic shift, both in the number of students or children that are being born and the demographic profile of our city, um, which is why we see the total school age population in Boston decreasing. Not just B P S enrollment decreasing. This is not just about um students exiting our system. Um, and I will just say, cause I, um, we, we are planning to come back to the school committee. Um, I believe in mid-December with our finance update, that will include a preview of enrollment projections and some high-level numbers um, based on the projections review, which is um currently in process.
I would also just selfishly add in as a, as a talking point for us. But um, you know, the change of five hundred and seventy-four kids, we have uh, you know, six hundred and twenty, thirty dropouts. So with some really hard work, we should be able to get our young people back into our system and get those numbers back up. And, and that's just the right thing to do for our kids.
And I'm with you in that. I, I know I'm over my time. I, I will just also say that, like, as we uh, just left the conversations about the labor contract and its implications for special education. Uh, I think one of the greatest levers for schools to do right by kids is an enrollment process that can accurately project the patterns within the system around special education, and then can help schools to, to make instructional plans accordingly. And so I, I, that is where the root of my question is. I obviously, like, given the governing structure here, care about the sort of fiscal implications. But I'm much more concerned about how educators plan for the most vulnerable kids. And to your point about early childhood intervention is the beauty of the program. And after some years of data, we can start having predictive uh conversations around what we anticipate to see and what those schools should be planning for at given moments. Um, and it is also the beauty of mayoral control of a education system, where we can be working with multi-city agencies. So that projections is not just a B P S uh conversation, but it is multidisciplinary um in the work. I will always say, and I'm always curious about this, if I'm, if I'm reading the data right, it does appear there is more stability in the metro area, in the charter sector. And so like, while we are watching people leave, we're also watching people not leave those schools in the same way. Granted, there's less seats to capture, so that can be a whole different conversation. But um, I, I also am always curious in that moment, like, what about their communication is driving recruitment in a way that we might not be? Um, and, and I'm out of time, so I will ask another question later. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you for that conversation related to enrollment. Um, I too have many questions around that, but more related around our thinking with the Green New Deal. So I will hold off until um we learn more about the updates there. Um, I first wanted to actually start off by saying, I got a chance to go to the College and Career Fair this weekend uh with my little ones. And while many students were out uh speaking with um different folks, my kids were running the track at the Regent Lewis Center. Uh, but we did get a chance to go uh and meet with uh different folks. Um, and kids were able to build lots of catapults in some of the STEM activities uh that were taking place. And any college that was there that had stickers, um, my kids wore those stickers. So they were walking advertisements for, for whoever was there. But just a great event. I really appreciate the work that, that went into that. Um, and love to see so many of our young people uh exploring different opportunities, uh, be it college, career, and or both. Um, with that, um, I only have one real question tonight. It's around the transportation pieces. Um, I know I had asked uh something similar about this last time we met. Um, but I'm curious what data is being shared with families upon late arrivals for buses to schools. Um, so for example, I might drop off my kid at a bus. They might actually get on the bus on time, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they don't hit delays um during their morning route. And so, but if I'm not tracking it on the app, then I have no idea whether they were fifteen, twenty, thirty, five minutes late to school. And so I'm curious what is being shared with families around that. Um, and then my follow-up questions around uh transportation are also, last time, I believe, uh, was shared that the, there is a trend around eight-thirty A M start times tending to have more inconsistencies in on-time arrival. Um, and my question is, do we see trends in specific schools or neighborhoods that are overrepresented in late bus arrivals? And the reason that I'm asking this is because, you know, I think we want all of our students to arrive to school on time. Um, but I do think that it makes a difference if time is compounded um, to certain routes, uh affecting certain students, affecting certain schools, affecting certain classrooms. And so would love to get more information on what that looks like, knowing that we're still um below the stated metrics threshold of the nine, the mid-ninety uh percent.
That's it. Great. So thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. Dell, uh, this sounds like a very detailed question for you.
Hello, good night, everyone. Um, on the transportation on-time performance, um. Uh, currently, we're hitting um daily between an eighty-eight to ninety-three percent on-time performance. And uh, uh, the on-time performance fl- uh fluctuates by day. Um, the eight-thirty tier is our worst tier due to traffic. Um, where we've done some analysis to see um where we're seeing the most, like, what neighborhoods we're seeing the most issues currently. Um, it's in the South Boston neighborhood. Um, so we're seeing South Boston, we're seeing um tr- uh, not Tross, I'm sorry, Hyde Park, um, where the bridge is closed in that area. And also, um, along that Jackson Square area, um, where it's came down to one lane. Um, there's a lot of traffic around that area around eight-thirty. Um, so most of our buses we're seeing running late there. Um, some of the work that the team is doing is for the October bid that Um, some of the work that the team is doing is for the October bid, that rebid that's coming up, we've added, um, since we're fully covered with drivers at the moment, um, with a surplus daily, we've added some additional buses back into the fleet to cut some of the rides short, um, for some of our eight-thirty schools. So we're, we're adding some capacity back into the fleet to optimize. Um, routes, shortening some of our routes, um, to improve on-time performance, um, across some of our schools.
Thank you for that, Dell. And for the, for, for the instances in which buses do arrive late, what communication are we having with families around this?
Yep. Um, when, when we're notified that a bus is running late, school messenger notifications usually goes out to families. So any if buses aren't being covered or buses are running late, uh, the, in the
My question, so I know that piece because I received those, but my question is, what happens if it's not that your child's bus is running late at the beginning of the route, but they come to school late? We're not getting notifications on whether a bus has dropped off my child late. I have no idea whether there is instruction that is being lost. I haven't, you know, families don't have this information unless you do make that communication point in which families are aware of what time their child is arriving to school. Aside from them tracking it on the app, which realistically, who tracks the entire route on the app?
Yep, um, that's a good question. So our teams do not notify families when buses actually arrive to the school late. Um, I know that schools made that notification in the Aspen portal when buses are running late. Um, notification does not go out. However, I mean, it's something I'm pretty sure like we can discuss internally. Um, across like schools on figuring out how to do it, uh, communicate the families differently.
Yeah, my, my concern is that if there are consistent bus routes that are arriving late and families aren't aware of it, then who's advocating or ensuring that those bus routes are just?
Um, so the schools are definitely advocating. I can attest to that. We have, um, those come through our root problem logs. Um, for our transportation officers to work through. Um, and one of the things for the October rebid, like at this moment, all of like our root problems that has come, uh, that has been recorded by our schools of buses running late. Um, the team has corrected the majority of them. I know that the last time I checked yesterday, we were down to three. Um, that both our routing team and our consultant was like working through to correct, um, before the October bid. But one thing I can say is schools are actively advocating with their transportation officers, um, bus drivers as well. Um, when we pull, when, when our data team pull, um, do the on-time performance, all of the top ten, like the, we, we pull data for the team to work on any top, like our top ten late buses um, that are reporting at school. So we're getting information from a number of different places for our teams to correct, for sure.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez, you have another question?
Do, thank you. And I'm sorry, my little guy keeps calling. I think he wants like a FaceTime before he goes to sleep. So if my phone rings, apologies. And I, I think I, uh, can connect with Ms. Valdez, who was on earlier as we're trying to like juggle evening activities and, and our kids who need us. So I see. Um, my question is around, also around transportation, but a little bit of a different one. We're, we're watching the complaint that was filed and um, based on what we heard in the, the news, I think sometimes, and I'm super, super tense, I'm curious. Uh, if, and I'm sure your eye is on this, but I'm sort of curious what your, what you think the solution is. Uh, you know, part of the, the issue is yes, uh, on-time pickup, which is like a real struggle, but also it's like our Plan B response to that pickup. And so I have heard that part of the concern is also about the reimbursement process or taxis. And I'm wondering if there's anything that is just like real, like we can fix that, we can make that problem, that, uh, sort of process feel easier for families. And so I'm curious if there are any innovations here. Are we thinking about, I don't know, a partnership with Uber or Lyft where we provide a code for families to be able to take a ride share? Like, is there something that we, it's the twenty-first century, like what can we do? So they are not like directly paying out of pocket, but we're helping them get their kid to school, maybe late, but get to school so they can get to work.
Yes. So I know Dell is really ecstatic to share this because this is an example where we have to think out of the box and we are. Um, and I think, you know, she also can share the, the solution that we're working on right now temporarily for when a bus misses a student, um, or a student is late to the stop and then needs the bus. Um, so on both of those, we, we are working hard on, on solutions, Dell.
Um, that's a great question, and I spend the larger part of my day today with Lyft. Um, so, um, we are in like the negoti- we're, we're pretty far along in the negotiation stages with Lyft. Um, we're finalizing some legal language. Um, I actually got to sit through some demos today on how we can, um, implement, do a program implementation for BPS. And, um, have set up some systems also internally in transportation to support this. Um, so we're looking at, um, rolling this out as soon as possible. Yeah.
Yeah. We just, we had, we, we had legal, um, we, we just had to work through legal. And to say this has been brought up before and we've never had it to the point we have it. So, you know, we're, we're definitely pushing through on the innovation side to make it happen. Um, Dell, I think it would also be good to just share your backup plan for what happens for a student if they, the, the bus is missed or, um, if they're late to that, you know, with using your Washington Yard buses.
Yeah, so we've had, um, so we are, uh, we have been in a pretty good space with um, drivers. So we've had a surplus of drivers like across, um, different yards. We've been using our Washington Yard buses, um, as like backup buses and kind of like routing students who are missed and the students who are being missed at the moment are predominantly students with IEPs due to bus monitor coverage. So we have been using buses out of our Washington Yard, um, to just like design individual routes day to day for any students that we can't cover after the bid. Um, and send in those buses out with monitors in the interim. And like I said, we're pretty far along in the process with Lyft. We're looking at finalizing, um, that contract with Lyft like ASAP. Um, like I said, I spent most of my day today with the Lyft team. And, um, and I'm gonna spend all of my Friday with the monitors union, um, tr- trying to like finalize and wrap up that contract. And I think that after we've won finalized, um, that contract, we are gonna do really well with recruiting and hiring in that space. Like, uh, between yesterday and today, we were able to, um, recruit and push through, uh, thirty individuals for hire, um, in the monitor space. And I think once we fi- finalize the contract, we're gonna be in a much better space for hiring, recruiting and retention. Uh, Brendan, you're muted.
I also cursed when I was trying to take myself off mute, so that saved me. One, congratulations. I think that's the type of innovation, uh, our city needs and we're so thankful for your leadership. And I suspect that's only a partnership that if it, if it fares well, can grow, particularly thinking about, and I've talked about this here before, but like the interface of those apps are much stronger than any tech we're gonna produce in-house. And we all know how to use it and it communicates to us to Ms. Lopez's question earlier, right? Like, we know when it drops us off. Like, if I get in an Uber, I share it with my husband, so he knows that I got there safely. Um, so it just makes that communication so much easier. And I'm excited about us using this twenty-first century solution um, to solve a short-term problem, but also probably some like long-term tech strategies that we can use, uh, down the road. Um, the last thing I have here, and I know I'm out, but I, this could be for a next time superintendent. We've talked about MCAS scores, we've talked about NAIP scores, we have really begun to scratch the surface around the sort of problems of practice, particularly with our most marginalized students. I am curious, as your team is working through this, um, sort of where we are seeing, uh, pockets of good opportunities for us to further dive deeper into learning, like there are schools across the system who have had serious decline, but also schools who have made real growth for some of our most vulnerable kids. And so as you have an eye on chronic absenteeism, uh, you know, the, the narrowing of achievement gaps for ENL, uh, Black and Latino students and special education students, like where are we seeing? Who should be highlighted? I'm also coming off of our day together at Edvesters, at School on the Move. So like, who needs to be highlighted? And then how is the sort of system leadership looking at those schools for solutions?
That's great. I'll take that for the next time and we'll have the academic team come down back with two, a few exemplars. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, there are no further questions. Um, so for the discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have eleven speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I will remind you, you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. And please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. I will now invite our Cantonese interpreter to offer support for our first speaker. That speaker is Peggy Chen. Peggy, will you please accept the prompt?
Right? Hi, hi. Yeah, um, just my son is Austin, he's in school. He's LD班来的. But just a早晨的巴士呢，是HS的二九五的。他也是中数呢，是八点五十七分的。但佢呢，日日都迟到。一日翻校已经好迟好迟噶啦。佢变得依家咧， 他唔翻学，话，话日日都迟到。一日咁迟到啊，变到佢俾食咧，系咩？
嗯，OK,好，我帮你翻译下。So, um, Peggy, um, her son Austin is at JQUS and he has special needs and every day there's a bus H two nine five at eight twenty-seven AM. And so the bus is late every day. So every day pick up her son and then arrive in school very late. This is she have no idea why it takes so long. And she said that once he got onto the bus, the bus would go around and around. She does, she's not sure why it takes, why, why the route is like that, because from Chinatown to the school is not that far, but every day his, her son arrived to school late. And because of that, it's really impacted, um, his emotional and, and, um, learning ability. Now, the, her son doesn't wanna go to school. And this is not good. So,好，等我帮你翻译个好嘛。So, um, Peggy also say that the PM situation is also, um, has a big problem. Um, the bus is H one two six eight at, um, four twenty-four PM. And she's supposed to have door-to-door service, but she's not getting it. Um, the bus driver just dropped her son off at a crossroad. And so this is really far uh, from our house. And this is, and her son doesn't wanna go to school every day. It's really impacting his ability of learning. And his emotional, um, social emotional. He's already just kind of slow in learning. This just makes the situation a lot worse.
Thirty seconds.
是，是啊，但，但佢咧， 咁佢咧就系吸咗我电话，次次都系咁。
Okay.
是啊，吸咗我电话。
Okay. Um, she said that she actually called the transportation department and asked for interpreter. Um, no interpreter was given and just, they just hung up on her.
但佢咧， But I, I, but he's like this. He's like this, he's not going to school. But actually, my door is very busy. But I hope they arrange a Sunday bus. Because it's important, it's important. It's must-need bus. It's must-need bus that gets to my door.
Okay. Um, she said that she has um told the principal the situation multiple times. Um, the bus driver said that her road where she live is too narrow. Um, therefore, they cannot give her door-to-door service. She said that we, she hoped that her situation um problem would be resolved and, and maybe a small bus is a solution for her situation.
Excuse me, Hannah and Peggy, thank you both. Um, I'm afraid you're past uh your time, but uh we're going to give your information, Peggy, to Dell, um the head of our transportation department for follow-up.
Thank you for your opinion. He will turn your request to Dell. He will translate and solve your problem.
It's fast, it affects my son so much. He's late, he's late, he's late. I'm worried.
She said, please help as soon as possible because he's already behind academically in so many ways.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our next speakers are Michael Heischman, Robert Jenkins, Cheryl Buckman, Sharon Hinton, and Sarah Horstley. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Michael Heischman?
Am I on?
You're on.
Mike Heischman, Dorchester Beja. When I last testified before you on October 12th, I pointed out that the top leadership of the school department is very white. I have requested that you share with the community a diversity organizational chart. What staff changes have been made? For those who have departed, transferred to new positions, and for the new hirees, what are their diversity demographics? What I did not know then was that fifteen high-ranking retired BPS educators of color had sent a letter to Ms. Skipper on August 24th protesting against the targeting, harassment, and elimination of anti-racist black and brown central office leaders. More than two months have passed since the Aug- August 24th letter. This is your fifth regular meeting since the letter was sent. Why has the scandalous accusation been hidden from the public? School committee chair and members, when did you first hear about the scandal, if you have? And what did you do about it? Why hasn't this been brought before the school committee at the public at any meeting since August 24th, including today's, except to the best of my ability, my testimony today? At every meeting, Acting Superintendent Eccleston reported at these meetings that he had talked with Ms. Skipper many times every day. Both of them planned the reorganization of central office, the transfer and elimination of current leaders, and the hiring of new replacements. Both of them were in charge of this racist coup d'etat. When did Ms. Skipper hire an outside lawyer to investigate the August 24th letter? This reminds me of the Mission Hill investigation, which led to the damage of reputation of the educators of the school, the closing of the school, and the lack of accountability and consequence for central office. How long will this new investigation take place? Who will receive the report? What will be done? Will this be another whitewash? Racism by our white leaders in central office has raised its ugly head. The school committee must take strong and decisive action. Speaking only for myself, I demand that Ms. Skipper and Dr. Eccleston be placed on administrative leave. I recommend that Dr. Charles Grandson be selected as the acting superintendent. I want this to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins.
Good evening. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, good, uh, good evening, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening, Madam Chair Robinson. Good evening, school committee members. I've already sent in my statement because there's no way I could say it in three minutes, but I'm gonna be brief as possible within my three minutes. I want to stay on Ms. Sullivan's good side. Um, I want to speak about public safety in the schools. Uh, you know, it has really been, you know, I, I know this is uh Superintendent Skipper's first month in. There's been a lot of violence and there's a lot of violence, as I've heard, you know, during this whole entire meeting from community members. We have to understand too that COVID has played a part. There are a lot of our, our students and families and even teachers who are going through traumatic experiences, making sure we have the necessary resources for everybody involved. But the, but, but the population that has been hit the hardest has been our students. I am a sports official, a number of BPS sports, and I see it all the time. I go back to my alma mater to officiate JV football games, and I see packs of students with nothing to do but negativity. And that's not all their fault, but again, we have to look at resources. We know this, BPS and the Boston Police Department cannot do it by theirself. We have to, I'm gonna keep on saying this until I'm blue in the face. We've gotta get, it, it's the village raising the village. We have to get other city departments that can help out here. We all have to be one band, one sound. The Boston Public Health Commission, Centers for Youth and Families, those are just to name a few. As far as our libraries, our libraries are a ton of resources. Our community-based organizations such as the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, Teen Empowerment. We can go on and on. I would strongly suggest when we, we have a town hall on public and school safety, that's number one. Madison Park has had a number of instances, a number of parents who know that I'm also community uh advisory, I mean, a community engagement advisory council member since its inception. I'm a school site council member at Madison Park as well as president of the Madison Park uh Alumni Association. I reside in Mattapan, but I'm citywide because I know the city and that's what I do regularly. But one thing I would like to also add too, when I speak about Madison Park, is the, I was on the Madison Park, I'm changing up here, I'm going a little, little bit to talk about the Green Deal, not in depth, but the Madison Park Visionary Meeting last week. I'm not even gonna talk about it. It was really, really, the Madison Park um Visionary Meeting was really uh a bad show, but I want to say this, that when we continue the meetings again, that students, parents, and teachers be the first ones to speak before uh, you know, elected officials and other community people. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a member of FAMCOSA. I'm a parent to a fourth-grade special needs boy at the Dever. Um, I also reside in South Boston. My son rides the bus da- uh daily, and he's a door-to-door pickup. We know that the busing problem is citywide, and it's only getting worse. My son's bus has either been late to and from school uncovered, no monitor, without no notification. This is totally unacceptable. As a parent, I instill my faith and trust in BPS transportation to get my son to and from school. It's usually three to five minutes depending on traffic in the area. I've had several incidents so far this school year with. This leads to me to the one day that still sits at the pit of my stomach. September 23rd, I got the text message that there was no monitor covering his bus. I was about to see the worst nightmare that could ever happen to a parent. The bus did its normal route. Just before I hit my stop, it was sitting idle at a previous stop for several moments. After a few moments, I had saw my son at the glint corner of my eye run down the most dangerous street in my section. My heart sank in frozen time. I had asked him what happened in his own words with his hand covered over his eye. Mama, the boy kept bothering me, hitting me with his own shoes on the bus. I took the shoe, threw it on the floor. He took his other shoe and hit me twice in my eye. It set me into panic. I got scared, and I ran off the bus fearing for my safety. I immediately called his teacher, who was very concerned. The school was also notified on this matter. I had also called transportation and spoke to someone who said in quote, "Transportation is not responsible for when it leaves a ch- when a child leaves the bus, no matter the situation, if they have an IEP or not." I was told this dispatcher, I told this dispatcher that the bus driver did not follow my son to ensure his safety at home. The dispatcher said that it's up to the school to discipline those students involved. My huge problem is it only takes five seconds for something to happen. BPS safety wasn't notified, the police wasn't notified, myself nor the school. My son runs off in absolute fear. God willing, thank God he knew how to get home that night. The, the driver reported the incident, but yet who's left, i- is this even acceptable? This is my only child, and I trust the transportation system that has now shattered his complete trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckman. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Good evening, Superintendent Skipper and members of the Boston School Committee. I'm Sharon Hinton, Executive Director of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated, educator, community activist, Hyde Park homeowner, parent of a BPS graduate and former BPS student. When I first organized Black Teachers Matter Incorporated, I was questioned by some prospective board members and later trolled through social media by racists, asking the questions, "Is that gonna be a problem saying black? Shouldn't we use the term BIPOC so we seem less confrontational?" Or, "You're a racist and further dividing us. All teachers matter." Let me state unequivocally that until black teachers matter, all teachers won't matter. The recent article in Schoolyard News in the Globe as well as social media spotlighted a letter submitted to Superintendent Skipper talking about the disparate treatment of black teachers administrators within BPS who felt pushed out, marginalized, or terminated. The letter also requests an immediate investigation into allegations of practices, policies, systems, excuse me, and individual actions demonstrating these charges on a district-wide or school level. In fact, Black Teachers Matter was founded in response to my own professional struggles while fighting to survive white supremacy and oppression in various levels of academia. If we as educators, as people, as human beings are to eradicate all of the cancer of racism and equity, oppression, inequality, and discrimination, we must look at how we all may have become numb and complicit with the institutions that uphold and profit from the systems, policies, and procedures that hold these issues in place. Are we actively dismantling these inequ- these inequities and holding true that all mankind were created equal? Or are we mirroring that Nazi machine that murdered so many and explain their compliance by stating that we're just doing our jobs? When Charlottesville happened, some elected officials stated there are good people on both sides. But how is denying students the right to have excellent black teachers and brown, black and brown administrators being good? And how and why are highly qualified and experienced black teachers and administrators leaving the district? How many black and brown teachers and administrators are currently employed and being recruited? Where are they physically, financially, administratively, and programmatically? What is happening to black teachers and administrators? Why does the top leadership in BPS seem to be increasingly bereft of melanin? Let's all call for a full and immediate investigation into the terminations, marginalization, and career-stifling actions of anyone in BPS administration, operations, and leadership regarding black and brown administrators and teachers. Black Teachers Matter joins the Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts and the signers of this letter in demanding answers to these and several other questions regarding the current state of educators of color. If we are really serious about what the data and evidence indicates about the importance of black and brown teachers and administrators and the direct correlation to high school graduation, college admission, and academic success, we know black representation matters, and we must consistently do something, not only for black and brown students and families, but for everyone. Don't stand by and watch what you're just doing and say that you're just doing your job and don't think it affects or matters to everyone but you. Thank you for listening and your time and attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Horstley, followed by Ruby Reyes, Mimi Li, Allison Friedman, Rachel Young, and Jessica Manna. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Sarah Horstley?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Horstley. I live in JP, and I have a fourth grader in BPS. I helped to start BPS families for COVID safety a year ago. FAMCOSA, as we're known, represents families across the district and includes pediatricians, experts in ventilation, and families with children who have unique health and education needs. First, I want to agree with what other community members testified about. BPS needs to address challenges with transportation, structural racism, and violence in the community. Second, I want to address COVID safety. FAMCOSA shares a district's goal to keep students in school. However, we're deeply frustrated that the district continues to undermine this goal through a wholly inadequate policy around COVID. There were over a thousand, 1,666 COVID cases in BPS during the first six of school this school year, compared to 260 cases in the first six weeks of school last year. This is um according to BPS's COVID dashboard. In other words, the number of COVID cases this year is more than 500% higher. This means learning disruption for students, work disruptions for their caregivers and school staff, never mind the health impacts. Hospitals in the area are now overwhelmed by pediatric admissions of respiratory viruses, and children are actually being sent out of state to get care. So what do we need to do to improve COVID safety in schools? For a homework assignment, my nine-year-old wrote a letter to his principal with a concrete recommendation. I'd like to read from that. Dear Principal, I believe that we should bring back pool testing. You should bring it back because it would make the school safer, since we would know when someone gets COVID. If a test is positive, we would go back and test everybody. If a test is negative, we wouldn't. That is why I think you should bring back pool testing. My fourth grader has a concrete recommendation to address COVID in schools. BPS does not. The district's policy this school year is hollowed out. There's no PCR pool testing, there's no universal masking, there's not even a clear definition of a school outbreak and what interventions the district will take to address the outbreak and outbreak. Two days ago, as families, uh we received an email from the superintendent, the mayor, and the school committee chair of COVID. The email began all right, noted, noting that over the last few weeks, wastewater data has shown a spike in COVID-19 viral particles, suggesting higher levels of community spread. And continued to say, as we enter the fall and winter, we expect that the spread of COVID-19 and other respiratory illnesses will increase. However, um, the BPS email went on and concluded just by reminding us of its existing inadequate policy. Most frustratingly, the mayor and the superintendent frame any response to the uptick as a completely individual undertaking. So for example, the email says we strongly encourage masking. However, how will the district track whether that increases masking? And more importantly, why don't the city and BPS require universal masking in schools for surge periods like this and for ten days after Thanksgiving and for after winter break? Similarly, the email reminds people to use your COVID rapid tests every week. True leadership based in science and integrity requires an institutional response, not an individual response. So bring back in-school PCR testing during periods like this and after holiday breaks. What are you waiting for, an all-out surge?
And Horstley, I'm afraid you're past your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good evening. My name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and a Dorchester resident. We want to thank the BPS leadership to not move forward with a vote on the merger proposals to the Sumner, Philbrick, Shaw, Taylor, Clapp, and the Russell. School decisions such as mergers, closures, and reconfigurations continue to negatively impact school communities and students throughout the district, causing more stress and trauma. The process known as Build BPS under former Mayor Walsh is now being rebranded as the Green New Deal by Mayor Wu. This process has continued to create more school transitions for students in a supposed effort to reduce transitions. The city's dashboard website on buildings has not been updated, a commitment to transparency that should be carried out at the very least. We once again request a comprehensive master facility plan that provides a 10-year timetable for facility maintenance, relocation, construction, and closure of our schools, an analysis to determine if plans are equitable by race, socioeconomic status, neighborhood, disability, and linguistic groups, an impact analysis to understand the effects on current and future students, families, and neighborhoods in the city, and a financial report including estimated costs for rebuilds, relocation, maintenance, program expansion, and swing space, and an educational plan regarding programs, grade reconfigurations, extended learning time, and student assignment. The Build BPS stakeholders group, of which Beja is a member, have been asking for this information since Build BPS began in 2015. Beja again demands a moratorium on school closure and major facility decisions until BPS and the city provide a master comprehensive facilities plan. Beja would also like to call attention to the recent letter released by 15 retired, high-ranking BPS leaders of color who are demanding that Superintendent Skipper put an end to the pattern of targeting Black and Brown central office leaders. The district has hired a lawyer for an internal investigation. Beja asked that a thorough investigation include a review of white central office staff who have been at the helm of mismanagement for many years, who are then coddled and provided support despite being in the district for decades through the continual mismanagement of major decisions such as budgets and buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mimi Lai.
Good evening. My name is Mimi Lai and I am a parent at the Charles Sumner from Rosendale. I chair a committee of parent volunteers who help with school communication, event planning, and family engagement. So imagine our dismay when the Sumner community got a last-minute robocall for a 9:00 AM Saturday meeting about a proposed Sumner Philbrick merger. There weren't even flyers translated into Spanish for the Spanish language meeting. So the initial optics were, we, BPS, aren't serious about engaging with your community and this is all performative. So when concerned parents reached out to you, you listened, postponed, and you hit the reset button. We are sincerely grateful. We are also thankful that you are moving forward with a neighborhood-wide Rosendale meeting in November, which we have been requesting for years and we recognize as a tremendous first step. Now what next? We do understand the structural issues the district faces. We understand we have a budget deficit and decreasing enrollment and we, Sumner, need to figure out where to house our sixth grade with you. But ultimately, what we want is reassurance that you have an equitable long-term plan for renovating and merging the Rosendale schools. They say in nature hermit crabs gather in one spot and line up to decide who is going into which shell, usually a bigger shell. Apparently, it's very efficient and no one is left vulnerable. With that model in mind, it's imperative to gather together and talk to you about the different possible merger configurations. We don't want to do this in a process in a piecemeal fashion because then you lock these configurations into the future. These mergers and transitions must be done transparently and collaboratively. We have so many questions that have been left unanswered. Like, when are you going to renovate the Irving? If we aren't a prime candidate for the Irving, then when are you going to renovate the Sumner building? There's over 600 people at the Sumner and Irving is the nearest empty building. So what we fear is being last in line and being forced to do the most transitions, which would be tough on our mostly low-income community, which has a large number of EL and special needs students as well as the most Black and Hispanic families in the area.
Twenty seconds.
Other questions we have are about, is this two-campus merger permanent? Families have told me over and over again, they can tolerate temporary solution, but they'll leave if it's permanent. We predict enrollment will plummet otherwise. So we do want to be partners in this process and rebuild trust and cooperation. My fellow Sumner families will be speaking next to outline what we need from you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Allison Friedman.
Hi, I'm Allison Friedman, a Roselandale resident and a Sumner mom. School committee, you've been hearing from me asking questions about the proposed merger for the Sumner for many months now. And what I want to tell you is that I have never felt more heard than when I saw the email last week putting the merger on hold, announcing a meeting with all of the Rosendale schools, and promising transparency and equity analysis of future mergers. I am incredibly thankful for that decision and the tone change. And I'm ready to do the work with you and the other Roselandale schools. I hope that all of us meeting means that you will be creating a long-term plan like what Mimi talked about and Ruby talked about. Students and staff deserve to be able to envision their future. I want you to know that we will not quietly accept a merger without that long-term plan for our whole neighborhood figured out. We know that the Sumner Philbrick merger is still coming up for a vote in the spring. And as I have said before, our community is not against mergers on the whole. But we want to make sure that all possible options for our school have been explored and analyzed. That would include all possible merger configurations within Roselandale. And if we are going to be moving to another location, perhaps don't merge us until we make that move to minimize the number of changes for students and staff. We believe that there are ways to keep the Sumner in our own building. I just had a great conversation with the manager of the Roselandale Community Center who was excited to have her gym and basement area used more during the day and was really open to letting us send our students there for some specials classes, which would open up room for classrooms in our building. We would love to share our ideas with you. We would like all the different merger options and the option of staying in our own building to be analyzed primarily from an equity analysis. Based on our own analysis, merging the two Rosendale schools with the largest low-income, homeless, multilingual, and BIPOC populations concentrate students who need more services. There would need to be lots of benefits to outweigh that concentration of poverty and race. We want to be involved in this analysis. And in fact, your own racial equity planning tool requires that stakeholders are involved in equity analysis. When we learn that you're proposing a particular merger for the spring, it does make me feel a little bit again like our voice will not be heard in the conversations between now and then. It gives us neither sense that you are not going, that you're going to try to convince us of something you have already decided. I would start these conversations with an open mind, looking at all the options with the BPS staff. There are things that we know about our school communities that you in the central office don't know. Our knowledge is valuable and deserves to be taken seriously. We deserve a seat at the table for the decision-making as opposed to be sold central office's vision for our kids. A school committee member asked about the racial equity planning tool. And for, in our case, it wasn't really used in this decision before the decision was made with the initial proposal back in the spring. And then we were not involved in the process. So you can have a racial equity planning tool, but it actually isn't going to be successful if you don't lead with equity and you use it on the other end to just prove that your decision is equitable. So that's, that's my answer to the school committee's members' question about that tool and its success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Young.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Young. I'm a Sumner mom. Show off my great Sumner sweatshirt and a Rosendale resident. I'm going to reiterate some of the points that I made tonight. I will try to be brief. My hope is that I will yield a minute that can be used for general discussion and acknowledgement of some of the concerns we're bringing this evening. Very often, we come before you, repeatedly, actually, we've come before you saying the same thing night after night without any acknowledgement. And it feels like we're not being heard. And if we're not being heard, then we don't really feel that we're being engaged in a dialogue. And that is what we're asking for, a dialogue. I'm kind of the bulldog of the group. I tend to be a little more aggressive in my language. That's just who I am by nature. So I'm going to be a little blunt this evening with my asks. We've been sitting here muted for about two minutes, which is really frustrating and feels disenfranchising. And again, when we come before you with our requests, questions, they seem to go unacknowledged. We've asked numerous, on numerous occasions for enrollment and space data related to the proposed merger. This is the very same information the Green New Deal is supposed to be producing right now. And it's supposed to be produced, to quote the Green New Deal website, with urgency and transparency. But since July, BPS has ignored requests, specifically these requests for data. We filed a public information request in September asking for information from the Public Facilities Department and from BPS. The PFD provided the information we asked for, but BPS is still in non-compliance. That's obviously not transparent and it's obviously not taken with urgency. So Superintendent Skipper, I believe that you present a new direction with BPS. I also appreciate the community meeting in November. But again, to reiterate some concerns, we're just worried that this is checking off a box. We've been burned so many times by BPS in the past and I think that has to be acknowledged. Tonight, you could instruct your staff to comply with the public records request immediately. And this would go a long way to show us that you're serious about changing the process. Your team could right now call into our SSC meeting, which is going on, to give us an update rather than talking in private conversations with our principal. And I'm going to be really blunt with my next request. Please communicate to your staff, and I know they're listening this evening, to stop misrepresenting the truth and I'm being kind in those words. And better yet, you'd be better to hire new staff that would be honest with us. Don't allow the Megan Castellos and Sam DePinas in central office to tell us that a merger will give us access to more specialist space when it won't or that our two schools, 38 classes, will fit in 34 classrooms. You own their contact going forward. And to Chair Wendy Robinson in the committee, my last request is directed to you. Each night, we come before you with the same request. Demand that BPS thoroughly explore all alternatives to these mergers, looking specifically at costs and equity. Be critical of any proposal that lacks this basic due diligence. But most importantly, engage with us in a dialogue that goes beyond these two-minute testimonies. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder to please direct your comments to the school committee chair. Our next speaker is Jessica Manna.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Manna and I'm a Roselandale resident and a Charles Sumner parent. I'd like to thank the school committee and Superintendent Skipper for postponing the merger votes and agreeing to community involvement before any new merger proposal is put up for vote. There is much to repair with the school community as the previous process created significant distrust between the school community and BPS. The onus is on BPS to rebuild that trust. We agree with BPS that mergers are necessary and that larger schools are likely the future of BPS if we want to provide all of our students with equitable academic instruction and enrichment opportunities. That being said, we know that the trust necessary for us to move forward with a truly collaborative process can't be built unless their standards are met. We want to ensure that there is a true effort to involve the community. Simply holding meetings is not enough. All meetings should be advertised at least three weeks prior in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole with interpretation services at those meetings. The meeting should be held over Zoom or a hybrid format, much like this one, to ensure maximum participation. We do not want, and we will not accept, quite frankly, a single merger plan for short-term with no long-term plan for all Rosendale schools. A short-term plan is not only inefficient, the uncertainty it causes creates significant harm to our families. We do not believe a merger for the 23-24 school year would be equitable at this point. Parents must be given ample notice about any mergers or other plan changes to schools prior to the lottery process. We would like an assurance that no merger will be moving forward for the 23-24 school year. We don't want an option that does not provide significant benefit to our students, like smaller class sizes, more space for specials, more support staff, new or renovated facilities. And we also don't want an option that causes significant reduction in teaching staff. We ask that the school committee ensure that this process to create a new collaborative merger proposal and any future proposal addresses these concerns and the concerns that we have discussed in past meetings before it is voted on. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and share your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first and only action item this evening is a grant for approval in the amount of $440,800. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any objection or discussion to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cretan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Joe O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grant is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is an update on the Green New Deal. I will now turn it over to the city's chief of operations, Dion Irish. Welcome, Mr. Irish.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Good evening to you and all the members of the school committee. Superintendent Skipper, happy one-month anniversary. I'm proud to serve as chief of operations for the city of Boston and for Mayor Michelle Wu. The city of Boston's operations cabinet is responsible for managing major facility projects across the city. And our school buildings are some of the most important facilities. We're excited to collaborate to pick up the pace of new school buildings and renovations. The Green New Deal for BPS is our shared commitment to expanding access to safe, healthy, energy-efficient, and inspiring learning spaces with state-of-the-art classrooms, cafeterias, auditoriums, and athletic outdoor meeting and support spaces. We are committed to the BPS quality guarantee that every student should receive high-quality academic instruction, access to enrichment opportunities, modern facilities, student and family support. I know our BPS chief of operation, Indira Alvarez, will reinforce this message tonight when she speaks. The challenges that BPS is facing will require us to make hard decisions to achieve the quality guarantee for our students. We all know our facilities are not currently meeting all of our students' basic needs and that must change. Firstly, though our incredible facility team at BPS worked tirelessly to keep our facilities clean and safe. Half of our buildings were built before World War Two. And many are in need of major upgrades. Second, many of our facilities in their current state are not suitable to support the academic vision we have for our students. And some buildings or students are without access to cafeterias, science labs, gyms, auditoriums and other central gathering spaces. This is also a matter of equity. I know that the all hands on deck team that Mayor Wu has assembled is happy to be here tonight to update the school committee and community on this important work. Since we've launched the Green New Deal for BPS and because many are curious as to how this connects to the administration's overall green agenda. Please also allow me to introduce Mayor Wu's senior advisor and director of the Green New Deal. Oliver Sellers Garcia to give brief remarks and then he'll pass it over. To our colleague, chief of operations for Boston Public Schools, Indira Alvarez. Oliver.
Hi, thank you very much, Chief Irish, and thank you so much to the committee for having me here. I'm just here to introduce myself and look forward to working with so many folks in this effort. So my name is Oliver Sellers Garcia. I started last month. As the Green New Deal Director. A I am a senior advisor to the mayor. I work in the mayor's office and. A little bit about my background, I. Was the director of resiliency and equity at the MBTA and prior to that, I was the sustainability and environment director in the city of Somerville. The the Green New Deal overall is really a a. Investment plan where we tackle climate. By addressing the, you know. Social, economic and racial inequities, making life better. Today, focusing on well being and jobs. It's really. It's our commitment to tackling climate and demonstrating. How much better of a city we can be when we center climate action. So the. Green New Deal for BPS is is a portion of a manifestation of the Green New Deal and it's it's so wonderful to be partnering with BPS on this. And of course, I'll I'll let the rest of the speakers talk about the details, but just to tell you a bit about my role will be. As part of the the team from the city participating in these discussions. And projects and really to be one of the resources and advocates for. Climate in the development of of new facilities. Green buildings, for lack of a better way to phrase them, have so many benefits. The superintendent mentioned how much of our emissions come from city facilities. But also they do so much for their occupants in terms of. You know, daylighting and air quality and comfort. There's as as they expand beyond just classrooms. Our school facilities can do so much for the people who use them and in the neighborhood. And I'm so excited to be a part of. Just expanding the the beautiful green buildings that we have in our city. I will note that in my prior roles, I have been, you know, I in. MBTA, I was part of the capital program and in Somerville, I participated in a number of. Building committees for schools and other facilities. This is something that I actually. Enjoy and hold dear. So I'm I'm very much looking forward to working with all of you as we as we work on the Boston Green New Deal. So thank you for letting me introduce myself.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. As mentioned earlier, my name is Indira Alvarez and I am the chief of operations for Boston Public Schools. And a proud BPS alumni, West Roxbury High and a proud former parent. Of two BPS students. I just want to start off by saying that. With my over twenty five years of public service, I am dedicated to the work. I'm committed to making sure that. The work, the the initiative that I put forward that will make a difference for everyone in the district and in the city. First, let me also introduce some of the operations team members that are that are here tonight. With me is Deputy Chief of Operations Theresa F. Webster. And the Director of Capital Planning Green New Deal for BPS, Kayla Jackson. They're here to support with any specific questions that you may have at the end of our presentation. Thank you in general to the operations team. They've been awesome at the work that they've been charged to do. And again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you to discuss a very important and exciting Green New Deal updates for Boston Public School. I would like to thank Mayor Wu for adding the much needed resources to this effort. And thank our partners in the mayor's office and the PFD director's office. Additionally, I want to thank some specific colleagues who've been working tirelessly for years prior to me coming on to. Working for BPS and they continue to work with with me and the team to make sure that we get our schools to the twenty first century. Education that that we deserve. Some of those people are Nate Cooter. Megan Castello, Sam DePina. Jurekason and many, many others. My apologies right now for not mentioning your names, but I just want to say thank you for all your commitment. Then get the next slide. Thank you. So we are, we talk about quality guarantee. We're committed to ensure that every student. In our school system, receive the quality guarantee they deserve. High quality education, access to arts and sports. Modern buildings and resources to support students and their families. Next slide. In order to provide the quality guarantee, we need to construct new buildings that have enough space for school communities and meet modern education needs. We need to renovate our existing buildings to meet modern education needs as well. And we need to be aligned with the district policies of reducing transitions, reconfiguring our schools. To the pre K sets and seven twelve models. Lastly, upgrade upgrading buildings and combining resources for expanded opportunities. I will now turn it back to my colleague, Chief Irish.
Thanks, Indira. All right, next slide, please. I also want to, you know, give a big shout out to the public facility department that that manages the construction projects, the major projects for schools and for many other city agencies. The BPS in the city, we work very closely together along with many other agencies, mayor's office. All hands on deck, as mentioned before, to engage, visualize and plan, design and build. There are five types of projects that we work collaborating collaboratively on. The one is studies. The first step in any project is to understand what's possible. What the community wants, what our students and educators and families need. And we accomplish this through what we refer to as a study. A typical project begins with a year long study that includes community engagement. Then the next phase is a year long design, again informed by community engagement. And the final phase is construction, which is typically two years. We another type of project that we embark on is the MSBA core projects when we partner with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. To help fund these projects. We've had some very amazing projects that have been fruits of this partnership with the state. One was the Boston Arts Academy that opened this fall. This has been an extremely beneficial partnership to the city of the project that go through the MSBA process. There is an additional layer of another year because there is an application process before projects are accepted. We also. Embark on district district wide initiatives for construction and renovation projects at each school. And Indira will talk further about that later on. Yet another type are just renovations that are funded through the city, major renovations. To upgrade schools so that they can meet our quality guarantee. One of the methods that we use for renovations is our Renew Boston Trust program with our environment cabinet and department. And the Renew Boston Trust program taps into creative financing to make buildings more efficient and and save money. And use that cost savings to actually pay for these projects. And lastly, we have new bills. That are funded by the city. These are major investments of new buildings to for existing school communities. For example, we we committed in May to building a new pre K to six elementary school in Roxbury. Matter Pan and Dorchester and those neighborhoods. And these will be city funded projects either on existing BPS sites or new parcels that we acquire. Next slide, and I'll turn it back over to Indira. Actually, this is me. So we want to talk about some of the current projects that that we have ongoing. As I mentioned earlier. The first step towards renovating or building a new school is to conduct a study. This is the first of many opportunities for communities to engage and provide input. The study determine determines what the programming for the school should be. Which then informs the design. The city's public facility department manages the study process in partnership with BPS. Currently, we've contracted with consultants to manage a pre K to six to seven to twelve design study. It's pretty much an all star team. That will be working hard to engage families, students, staff and community partners. By competing this. Pre K to six, seven to twelve study will be able to standardize excellent programming and design. Standards for pre K to six and seven to twelve schools as well as other configurations going forward. So that all new schools are made of major renovations will meet the quality guarantee. And BPS and PFD can move faster around projects. Of course. Deep engagement with the BPS community and community at large will be crucial to making this process, this project a success. And we want to make sure that every neighborhood and every community is a part of this process. We will kick off engagement near the end of this year and will continue throughout two thousand twenty three. At the same time, we are planning on launching engagement on standard known studies for certain key projects that can't afford to wait. These include Madison Park. Mayor Wu is committed to rebuilding a world class vocational technical high school in the heart of Roxbury after decades of community advocacy. We know that Madison Park must be a school that creates a career pipeline. And great education for students from across the city and serves as a seven day a week resource for community. We're incredibly excited to partner with the community as we engage in educational visioning, which will help us move forward in the design phase next year. The Jackson Man Complex, we all know that this wonderful campus in the center of Austin has served as home for the Jackson Man Elementary School, the Horace Mann School. And the Community Center for the Austin Brighton Community. We are committed to building a pre K to six elementary school and a community center on that site. As well as a new facility for the Horace Mann School. This current study will help us to figure out whether all three would fit on this campus or if we should look for a new site for the Horace Mann School. But regardless, we're committed to seeing these projects through. The McKinney School Project, together the four McKinney Schools serve some of Boston's most marginalized students. And also occupy three of the highest need buildings in Boston. We are engaging in a design study to determine requirements for all three McKinney School sites to effectively serve their communities. And we'll commit funds to rebuilding schools. Lastly, I want to talk about White Stadium, which will. We're completing an assessment of the facility in collaboration with the parks department. To ensure that the facility meets BPS athletic standards and needs. And I said last, but there's one more before I turn back over. It's the West Roxbury Educational Complex that we we have a study in the capital plan. For this beautiful campus, that could be an incredible resource for BPS. We haven't started to study it, but we're committed to a needs assessment. To understand how to upgrade the facility to best serve Boston's youth. Next slide, please. And this one is me as well. We. Currently, we're we're proud to partner, as I mentioned before, with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to build. High quality new school buildings, the state of the art Boston Arts Academy that opened in September. We have two additional MSBA funded schools that are in construction. The Josiah Quincy Upper School and the Carter Elementary School. And we have also submitted applications to the MSBA for two new core projects for the Blackstone School. And for a new building to expand the older school in East Boston. Next slide, and this time I really will turn it back over to Indira.
Hi, as as Dion mentioned, I'll just review some of the other projects. We have some renovations and reconfigurations. Projects that the PFD and facilities team have been working together on and we're really excited. To share some of those detail. I want to highlight the PJ Kennedy project, her three face. And one of those faces are are completed, which is a replacement of their boilers. And we're currently addressing the ADA issues that they're having to make sure that they're in compliance. In addition, we did work on the Frederick Middle School to accommodate the Carter School swing space. And we're working with city partners on that steps as to where to move. As a net set for the Timopee. Just to name a few. Can I get the next slide, please? So this particular slide shows. A little more detail in terms of what the facilities team and the internal team are working. As I continue, it is important to mention some of these projects. Well, we have the big projects going on. We still have. A number of may look like small projects, but they're very, very important. We have focused. A lot of school specific projects, but we're also making a number of investment. For the district. To improve our schools. The facilities department is currently working on a number of those initiatives that are listed here right now, but to name some of them is our AC installations. We have currently a paint and project. Radiator covers. And floor screening, which is the strip and and be west of our floors. There is a list, we could go through them when you have done, if you have any questions about any specific one, we'll be here to answer questions on those. That's like, please. So this is a, this particular slide breaks it down by neighborhood. You can see in the graph the current projects across neighborhoods. Right now, we don't have any of the projects we're working on that are at risk right at this moment. But we do. Currently, we've worked on the Bryan High School. They have no floors for the seven and eight grade classroom. And this is just mentioned in some of it. This does not have. All the work that the team has been working on. And as Dion mentioned before, we're really excited about the McKinley study and all the McKinley buildings. And also the Charles Sound expansion, the completion of those, the the renovations that we had to do for grade seven and eight. We could provide additional information on that as well, but we just wanted to give you view of the entire neighborhood. Next slide, please. Before, sorry, go back to the previous slide. Sorry. Just and and I, for me, it's really important to just name a few others as far as. In Dorchester, I named like the Burke High School, the upgrade to the seven and eight grade science lab. In Jamaica Plain, as Dion mentioned earlier, the study to assess to assess the White Stadium facility. And many, many others that I really look forward to sharing with information with you as time passes. And then we're really excited about the project in the south end for the Carter School building. Slide the next slide, please. So for in order to, this is the facilities condition assessment, also known as the FCA. In order to create a transparent and robust capital planning process moving forward. The operations division is conducting a facilities condition assessment. The FCA will be a critical component in capital and deferred maintenance planning as well as transparent communication tool for the BPS community. The result of this project would also inform work prioritization. And support future capital planning strategies. The assessment to date. It has three different phases. Is the FCA, the assessment itself is the three D scanning. And is the ADA assessment. And currently for phase one, we've completed seventy five schools. On phase two, we've completed a hundred and two schools. And for phase three, we've completed forty seven school. Total full assessment that has been completed to date are thirty nine schools and we are currently on track. And on schedule to complete this entire assessment by spring of twenty twenty three. Next slide. So I just want to briefly touch in on the community engagement and. Our communities are aware clearly of the poor conditions of our buildings. And we're working hard to get and and I'll be really honest, we're working hard to regain the trust and. And we're working hard to get, and I'll be really honest, we're working hard to regain the trust and confidence of and the the trust of the community in our ability to deliver the Twenty-First Century School. But we cannot do any of this work without true genuine, true genuine engagement and partnership. There's a lot that we need to talk about, and we look forward to engaging with you in the near, very near future. Next slide, please. Additionally, the Capital Planning Team is developing a plan, is developing a plan for a citywide engagement, neighborhood by neighborhood. We have upcoming meetings that the Capital Planning Team is working with the Engagement and Communications Team to notify our BPS communities and the public in general. And we look forward to the continued conversation in the coming months. Next slide. So, and this is just a layout of a couple of the meetings that have been scheduled. And this is the, I think this is the end of the particular presentation, is the end of the slide thing? So, to this end, I I know that there was a lot, a lot of information, not a whole lot, there's a lot of details that we could definitely provide in a bigger report. So we're happy to answer your questions. I wanna again thank my colleague Dion Irish for joining us tonight in this presentation. And I really wanna thank the mayor for the true partnership on this important work for our students. And for those of you who know me very well, know that I do this work for forty-eight thousand plus accounts to work every day for the students of Boston. Thank you very much for listening. And if you have any questions, please let us know, the team is here to respond.
Great. Thank you. I wanna thank you all for your partnership on this critical issue. This is truly a collaborative effort that will shape the student experience for many years to come. So I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. I see Mr. Cardette Hernandez, Mr. Alkins, and Ms. LaPera.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I have two questions, and I'm just gonna ask them both, and maybe we can sort of dance between them, because maybe they're connected. One, I know how complex this issue is, and so I just appreciate the the sort of brevity you brought to the presentation with the recognition that we're probably gonna wanna unpack a lot as we discuss tonight. I'm curious, as you're thinking about the sort of the studies, the the Facilities Condition Assessment and the design studies, those are like very important, I guess, pieces of information that we need to make school-level decisions. But like, where in this broader Green New Deal is the work towards a master's facilities planning process? And 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 then from there, sort of what are the goals and timelines for that? And then I think sort of separate and equal, I think it connects probably to some of the questions we continue to hear here about the decisions around mergers and the data that's used around those mergers outside of a master's facilities plan. And I'm thinking like even sort of granularly, that becomes sort of more true as you're thinking about like the Jackson Man as a school sort of specific, specific project outside of the sort of full analysis of the needs of the Austin-Brighton community. So, sort of two things, sort of analysis around mergers and sort of what data we use to make those decisions. And then the second piece, really around the master's facilities plan and and where are we and what will that look like and how are we gonna get there?
Dion, do you wanna take the first spot in terms of how we're working together? Or I could have Teresa talk to us a little bit about the FCA and how, what the ultimate goal is when that job that is completed, and if we could talk a little bit about the dashboard that we will have. Hi, Teresa.
Good evening. Hope everyone's well. So to answer the part of the question around the Facilities Condition Assessment and the studies and how they relate to creating a larger prioritization building plan for the district, they are parallel. So the Facilities Condition Assessment will result in a robust report for each school, as well as a prioritization recommendation on which schools are the priority for reconfiguration in terms of facilities upgrades, as well as ensuring any buildings that are in great, great need of complete teardown to address what is needed for a Twenty-First Century learning experience. And then parallel to that is the K, the PK six, seven, twelve studies that will provide a, another parallel, this is the kind of space you will need from an educational perspective to move forward with a long-term, three, five, ten-year plan for the district. So the two, the two projects are actually parallel to one another, and then will kind of combine and coalesce with the academic vision, which is the priority of how we create the spaces for the students moving forward. And I will pass it back to you, Chief Alvarez, for the second part of the question.
Can I just ask one clarifying piece before we move to the second part? You know, then, and this is maybe where I'm a little bit confused, like, how does how does that data back into what I guess is sort of the most essential question, which is like, what do we need as a district? But I guess more specifically, as we like hopefully inch towards high-quality neighborhood schools, like what do we, what does each neighborhood need? So, and we could assess the quality, and this may be outside of your shops, and maybe it's like a third sort of inventory that aligns both of those things. Like, as we assess building possibility, there has to be some sort of denominator around neighborhood and district need. And where do we, where are we generating that information? Because I think that would be important too, right? Like, how many seats does it take for an individual neighborhood? How many seats does it take for the whole district across grade bands? And then we start looking at the, at an inventory of our, our current real estate to be able to thoughtfully analyze what we currently have, where the gap lies, and then what will need to either reconfigure or build. Does that make sense?
Yeah, through you, Chair, if I can, if I can weigh in on this one. So I think this actually goes to your earlier question, which was around enrollment and projections. So I think Nate, if you can just speak a little bit about how interactive in the process, you know, enrollment and strategy is in this piece for, for be able to determine what, what is the, the need of service for the students in a given neighborhood or a region of the city? And then how that is now as one large group, we are kind of overlapping that with the condition of the buildings and the academic programming that's going to need to be to serve the group of students that are in that neighborhood, so that everyone has that, that quality promise, so that quality guarantee. So Nate, do you wanna just explain Jamie's connection to it?
Yeah, happy to do so, Superintendent. And I think an example of this, and sort of the last published version of this in the Phase Two Report, we published neighborhood summaries that show the total students by neighborhood, and we included in that sort of access to schools close to home, so that we could start to get a sense of how many seats we had in a neighborhood versus how many students we had in a neighborhood. As part of that, we were able to identify places where we had too many seats in a neighborhood. Austin-Brighton was highlighted as an example of that. South Boston was highlighted as an example of that. And neighborhoods where we had too few seats to serve students close to home. The southern part of Dorchester on the Matapan border was identified as an area in that, in that analysis. So it is that sort of comparison of capacity to our, our enrollment that we're able to do internally to help guide some of the sort of short-term decision-making and assess some of our need for overall capacity. In terms of your, and I think you highlighted really well, that there is a basic math problem that we can look at, which is how many students do we have? And do some quick math in terms of how many overall schools we may need. And that's where the K-six, seven, twelve study is gonna be critical. Because the number of schools we need is really based on what we define as our K-to-six program. So whether or not we're building three hundred student schools, six hundred student schools, or a thousand student schools, determines how many schools we need as a district. And so we need to have an affirmative stance on that, and that's part of what the study will do. And then we can use our overall numbers to be able to then match that to neighborhoods overall. And so Superintendent Skipper mentioned Jamie Raccanelli is our Director of Planning and Analysis, the team that does a lot of the enrollment projections, capacity sort of analysis in partnership with the Facilities Team.
But it, it is, I wonder too, and this may be all part of it, so I just think it's worth sort of speaking. It creates another problem of practice for us as we move in a, to continue talking about students with special education students, kids with disabilities. You know, as we move into a hyper-seg, we move from a hyper-segregated system, our current denominator would just build off of those inequities, right? Where we are looking at segregated classrooms and not inclusive ones. So is there any part of the analysis that is also thinking about sort of the new models of instruction, and that might be this other sort of school-based study that's also happening? Like, what does it take to build a high-quality school? I'm not sure. But sort of where does pockets of vulnerability and the transformation of inequities exist in that analysis? And the way that we're thinking about the sort of math problem, so to speak? And then I'll let you get to the second question after that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna jump in there through your chair and just say that I think, I think you're hitting at the complexity of like now moving with inclusion and in creating additional bilingual programming, that that has to also be overlaid. And I think a big piece to this is the realization that academics has to be at the table to have this conversation. So we went from a situation where, you know, our facilities team was doing the best they could with the information they had to the recognition that this is literally a very large stakeholder cross-sectional group in Central that has to be sharing data and talking, so that we're not making the decisions based on one or two departments, but we're making the decision based on students and families. And so I think that this is, this is why it is complex. This is why we chose to kind of slow up so that we could really kind of bring to bear the data from each department as we're looking at this, to be able to plan it out correctly. So I think you're asking the right questions, that are the same things that have been on our mind, and that, that's in part, you know, part of the overlay and, and deep work that academics has to do at the table. You know, in figuring out in the different areas of the city, what programs need to be planned for in a multi-year planning process for inclusion and a multi-year planning process for bilingual education.
Which goes to sort of our previous conversation the last few weeks. A- as we move this labor contract that allows this sort of school-based autonomy around this specialized, I wouldn't call it specialized, like it's the floor, the programming that kids with disabilities need and deserve, but will inch towards inclusion. It does require us to then zoom out from a school-based level to be like, what does a, a neighborhood need for inclusive seats? And then, like, that has to be part of the denominator, because we'll still continue to build school-based situational seating that will always stretch a school too far if you're not thinking about it from a sort of the district lens of, of, of inclusion. Does that make sense?
Does.
Thank you, Dr. Alkins.
Uh, again, thank you for the, for the report. I also look forward to the updated data being concise and ready for us to review and ready for families to review in the dashboard. So I do look forward to that when that does get up and running. My question, I guess, is a little bit more basic as I'm thinking about your particularly community engagement overview and particularly the community input section. And so I'm actually curious as to what the team's strategy and vision of equity is moving into the, moving into that particular phase. And the, and the reason that I ask is because, you know, I think it goes to the point of some of what we've heard in public comment and some of the things that we've been asking along the lines of community engagement and listening to folks is also not the same as the power sharing and the decision-making and where they actually sit in that process. And it's important that folks who are stakeholders as they're being engaged, you know, to sort of quote what we heard earlier, to not feel like a checkbox and to really feel like they are part of the decision-making process in a substantial way, not necessarily a titular or nominative way. But, so I am curious as to how you all are going about the community input aspect with it in mind that decisions are being made collectively and the strategies are co-constructed and not necessarily just fed and sort of advertised. And, and I'm not attacking anyone with that question, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the strategy.
I don't think this is an attack at all, I think it's a great question. And what I'm going to be pointing at my partners in this, because there are collaborative work that we have been doing. And Dion, I'm not sure if we wanna talk about some of the, the engagement that we are planning on doing for the K since to seven, twelve study, and then Ayla, I believe, is on, who could just briefly go into like some of the, the plans that we're having to get student voice and really not just having people coming to meet him, but actually participate in a decision process. Chief, I'm not sure of.
I can, I can touch on it to a certain degree. For, just to piggyback on what was said earlier, the, the K to six, seven, and twelve study, the FCA, those are all like foundational tools towards a master plan that's very complex, that needs a lot of more inputs to, to get to where our goal is to, is to have an actual, you know, ten-year plan by the end of next year. With respect to community engagement, we understand how important that is for the, the pre-K to six, seven, and twelve study. For example, we wanna make sure, we're, we're planning community engagement sessions in every single neighborhood, maybe multiple times, we, we wanna be able to engage with, with students, with, with families. I think the team has been doing a really good job putting together like a robust plan, but we still, we're still not done yet. That's why we haven't launched community engagement on that. But we wanna make sure we get input from the educational academic folks, everyone needs to be at the table. As this particular plan, you know, it needs educational programming standards, capacity analysis. It will help us with architectural standards, but none of it is gonna be successful without community engagement.
Dion, can you just run briefly on the efforts that we've been putting together and some of the work that you've done in several weeks here with us?
So, again, thank you so much, Chief Alvarez. Over the past couple of weeks, we've been doing some planning to ensure that the engagement process is, is collaborative, that is transparent, and that it is also equitable. Chief Irish mentioned some of the work that we're doing around the K-to-twelve study. Our goal is to also engage our young people in that process. We'll be doing some focus groups with those young people around the Madison Park study about some of the things that they'd like to see for their school community. Across the board, the goal is for capital planning to engage the entire district twice over about our buildings, what's going on with our buildings, our enrollment, and what Twenty-First Century School should look like for our young people.
We are also working with Dr. Grant's team to make sure that we're using the, the rep tool in this process as well. And he has assigned a couple of staff members who are like in the process of training and making sure that we are using the rep tool in this particular, in this and all the other projects that we have ongoing. I'm not sure if Nate or anyone else have anything else to add or send to Pina. All right, Dr. Grant, you came on.
Oh, no, I just wanted to underscore what Chief Alvarez shared and say that these are the kinds of things that we look forward to seeing on the dashboard as well, so that families and members of the community can track the progress and actually see what stage of the process we're in from From being clear about what our intended outcomes are, looking at data and being transparent about what that data is. And then also capturing the community feedback, but also understanding that it's an iterative process. So as we do that engagement and then do that data analysis, it will inevitably shift what our intended outcomes are and what the the. The desired outcomes are and the and the goals. And so our goal is to try to provide a visual that shows that process. And then what I have been really pushing the last few months internally is how do we get to very specific, concrete? Racial equity strategies, educational equity strategies that we explicitly list and that we implement. That we show work plans for implementation and that we monitor and that we report out on quarterly. That sounds like a lot, we're not that far away, we've we've had some infrastructure in place over the last three years to do those things. And as it mentioned in the DSC report, this press spring, our next step is simply to publish that process.
And the only thing I would add to that, good evening, everyone, is that. When we design our engagement meetings, we're constantly reminding the community of what step in the meeting that we're at with the racial equity planning too. So we're really intentional with that all summer and we're going to continue to do that through the fall and in future conversations.
And are we reporting of who are like who are attending the these meetings and from from the community as well? Because I think it's, it just goes a long way to show like, again, who are the perspectives that are at the table? And it, there's a sense of ownership that everyone has, particularly within this plan, and I know everyone's doing it for the goal. Of of enhancing the experience and and the outcomes. So again, yeah, I think for me, it just goes back to this idea of the power sharing that goes in the in the decision-making. Being there is fine, but the inclusion aspect of making sure that they have, they actually have a substantial voice in that decision. That's, that's, that's my perspective, so thank you, thank you, everybody.
Appreciate that, and the only thing I would just add that we also learned that we're that we're working on doing better going forward is actually having a lot of pre-meetings. With different stakeholder groups, making sure we accurately track who we're inviting, when we invite them, when we have the pre-meetings to like prepare them. Because some groups may not necessarily be. I'm sorry, my motion cycle went off, still at work. Sometimes, community members need a different space individually as groups versus being in a large group. So we're making sure we carve out space and time for that, for the elected officials, for different partners, from different businesses, and then we get everybody together.
Ms. Lepara, and then Mr. Maida.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it just makes me really excited to know that we are actually talking about this. And that there is investment from the city around, much needed investment from the city around these needs. So thank you to everyone for working on these pieces. I know folks have already talked about the incredible complexity of this and. Just to ensure I get clarity on some of the pieces that a member card at Hernandez had already touched on. Oh, I noticed that we've talked about and within the the deck. In the investments needed, we list facilities and like the condition assessment, like the school design from pre-K to six, seven through twelve. And then having information within the building dashboard. But I'm still unclear as to how we're thinking about really doing enrollment projections. Like, how are we thinking about gathering this data? You know, we've already talked about the importance of having a line of sight into enrollment projections for current status. But also for the next five, seven years and even much longer term projections based on census data and on population trends. So how and who is leading the work in understanding the current state of where families currently live? And where we project that they will live within the city of Boston? We have community engagement sessions that have already been scheduled. So does this information already exist for, say, the Rosendale community? Does this information already exist for parts of the Dorchester community? Has this analysis already been done in terms of the community need for seats currently as well as five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? I I don't, I just, I'm unclear as to whether this analysis has already been done for any of the neighborhoods.
Yeah, happy to, happy to sort of jump in and take this question. So the answer the first, first and most sort of simple question. We don't currently have a five, ten, or fifteen-year projection of enrollment. I think the, any forecasting of enrollment sort of that far into the future.
It's not necessarily forecasting of enrollment, my thing is like forecasting of residents of city of Boston. Like, we know that there are trends, we know, we have census data. So how is the city in, the city is planning on putting affordable housing in different parts of community, right? And so how is the city working to really think through what are the community needs? That then will give us more information around enrollment data, like what do we have in terms of demographic and population data?
Yeah, pre-pandemic, we were partnering closely with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. And Alvaro Lima's team, who does the, he's the city's demographer, who does a lot of work. Sort of overall in analyzing the city's demographic trends using census level data. And so our planning and analysis team internally was partnering with his team to make sure that we were informed about overall demographic trends of the city. And in particular, we were partners with our research team to integrate the the housing plans. So we knew how many housing units were being. And I'm not going to use the term, the correct terms on this, but how many new buildings were in the permitting process? How many were seeking approval for new and large developments? And then from there, we were also talking about what is the expected yield rate for the number of children in a specific building by type and by cost? And so if you build a single-family unit, how many children do we expect to be living in that unit? Versus a high-rise apartment complex that had one and two-bedroom apartments? And so that was work that we were doing, sort of really trying to push to try and get as much information five years out as we could. I mentioned that was pre-pandemic as things got disrupted while our planning analysis team was used to do a lot of different COVID response. As we now emerge from the pandemic, we are refocusing and re-establishing those partnerships to be able to do that work. What we found when we did the initial data analysis and neighborhood level data. Is that we had enough information based on the students who were enrolled and the basic enrollment patterns to be able to see how students were flowing through our system. And identify places where we needed new school buildings. When you combine that with the age of our buildings, the size of our buildings, and the lack of resources at our buildings. We identified key places where we needed to build new schools, knowing that even if enrollment shifted significantly, we would still need. New buildings in all of these neighborhoods, I mean, so that was why the big push was to launch new building projects. And I think Indy and Dion have both really emphasized the need for us to be focused on new school buildings. Because that's the best path for us to provide the types of resources and types of school communities that our students deserve. And so we're going to continue to work on that. I know the other thing I'll just mention is there, you know, when we published the initial Bill BPS report back. In twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, I'd have to look at the exact date. It included external enrollment projections done by a few demographers. We, our internal team had a number of critiques of the demographic projections that were in it. Alvaro Lima and his team had a number of critiques that were not incorporated by the consultants. And what we've seen is that that projection was far too optimistic about the number of students that we had. And so what we really want to do is rely more on a lot of the information that we have as the school system that requires. You know, we're, we know all of the students that are in the city, what schools they attend, what ages they are, where they live. Whether they're in private schools or in BPS schools, and that gives us a tremendous data point to look at and project the flow of students for multiple years.
Thank you for that, Chief Cooter, and follow-up to that is, this is, I, this is not my world. I imagine it's also not necessarily your world as Chief Financial Officer. But so I'm wondering, who are we looking to? Like, what are the models? How do we know that this is, in fact, looking at our current enrollment data is the path forward? Have we been engaging with other cities who've already engaged in this process successfully? The core, core models?
Yeah, when we launched, I mentioned before, when we launched the planning analysis team six years ago. We, the first thing that we did was look for models of enrollment projections and teams across districts that had done this well. We reached out to major sort of council, great city schools districts that did enrollment projections. We talked with Cleveland, Washington DC, several Texas districts. And the the one notable team that we really emulated was the the projections team at the Denver Public Schools. Denver had a very sophisticated system and really just impressed us with the amount of information they brought to bear. And so, you know, we really, we really leveraged and sort of asked them what information they were getting. And then our internal team, we recruited. We have a woman on our team who has her PhD and is a demographer. We have GIS specialists and data analysts who have really spent the last few years refining our internal. Projections metrics and really every year dive deeply into the data. And what we found is, and and this is, I know it's, it's almost becomes a little bit of a cliche, but Boston is so unique. As a full-choice district with so many small schools and so many specialized programs. That what we found is the historical trends that other districts are able to rely on, which is if you live in this neighborhood, you go to this neighborhood school. That is somewhere between six hundred and a thousand students for an elementary school, for example. That begins a lot easier to project than. A a school of a hundred students where the students come from three different neighborhoods. And every year, the number of kids who choose that school shifts based on a number of different factors and characteristics. And so we're constantly looking for ways, but.
I appreciate that, I think, and my apologies for interrupting, I think the the piece that I'm looking is. What cities are the models that we're looking for in terms of master planning around facilities?
Yeah.
Like, what, who are we talking to?
Can I jump in, Nate?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great, great question, happy to have you jump in, Dion.
Yeah, no, so I think one that we think is doing a good job is the District of Columbia with their system. But I think it's also important, not just to talk about what what system, but also because a lot of times these different systems that are doing it really well. That they're using good teams of consultants who helped them to to do it well. So I'd love to to get Kerry Griffin from Director of Public Facilities to jump on really quickly. Just to give us an overview of the of the team that we've put together with the DLR group, who's going to be helping us, helping us with this really complicated project. Kerry, you in there?
I'm here, Chief, thank you. So thank you for the question, so we assembled an incredible team of not only architects, but educators. That are part of this K through six, seven through twelve study and also a communication specialist. That will be, help us create an engagement plan for this process. The architect that we're using, as Chief Irish had mentioned, was, is from DLR, they're a nationally recognized. Company that have recently completed these type of program studies in Denver, in multiple areas across the country. So they're nationally recognized and they also bring a lot to the table with their key people that will be part of this study. Because we believe, you know, educators should talk to educators. You know, what we look at it from a planning perspective or an architectural perspective might not. We're not always looking through the same lens as, you know, as someone that's curriculum or academic based. So, you know, we, part of this is, you know, we've put together a great team. And we, not only do we want to create like educational specifications, architectural standards. Look at key, you know, look at the engagement process that is, that's research, data-based, but examine, share that information. Create listening sessions in every neighborhood. Focus with key groups that in every neighborhood. And then, you know, share data, provide feedback, and so really look at this holistically. And for 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 what is needed. And then also working with our partners at BPS, you know, we're always in constant communication with them and looking at. You know, the facilities assessment that they're doing is going to align and help us with our data as we start examining the buildings in what's needed. So I'm really excited about this project and I, you know, I'm really looking forward to the rollout of it. Because I think it's going to provide a lot of opportunity for engagement.
Thank you for that, I just have one other question, I think this is more opposite for the superintendent. You know, one of the things that we know is coming up is enrollment, right? For 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 next year. And so as we approach preview and enrollment season for BPS. How does this timeline for these studies? Oh, apologies, I didn't realize she had stepped away, but somebody on her team is well-versed, I'm sure can help the superintendent out with this question. How are we thinking about the timeline around these studies? And the vision for some of these Green New Deal pieces? Knowing that we have preview days coming up, we also have enrollment season upon us. If there are changes that could be happening for next year? And maybe the question is, are there changes that could be proposed for as early as next year? How are we thinking about that timeline engaging with the upcoming enrollment timeline or decision timeline for for families?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that and then I'll defer to the superintendent, she wants to add it or any other team. So currently, we have to handle this in two phases. The first phase is obviously like dealing while we're in transition and collecting information and data. And getting ahead of timelines going forward. So what we've debriefed and talked through, based on the feedback that we received from the community and different staff members and different departments internally. We have to move our timelines of these decisions way ahead and align it more closer to end on the body in the school year. So ideally, what should happen in a perfect world, and we're getting there, and once these studies are done, we'll be more aligned to do it in the future. We need to have decisions done by June, so families know for the next fall what to pick for the next year after that, that makes sense. So for this current school year, we want to make sure that we do these analysis, we do these studies. And we have the engagement that we want to, so we're going to operate in a, in a period of flux for this year and until the studies are complete. And until we can get on a timeline that's more predictable and way ahead than we currently do it now. If if you go back in history, we typically have decisions made on any changes like in the fall, October, November. So that way we can align it to the school preview time. What we want to do is move that back to have these decisions done by this body in June. So that way, over the summer, families can plan, in the fall, families can consider their options, have plenty of time to have those. Conversations and discussions and make the most appropriate choice for the fall. So we're not quite there yet, but for this year, what will have to happen is there'll be a little uncertainty, but we'll over-communicate with families and over-keep with. Families and communities and schools about what that looks like pending any changes that we make during the course of this year. So this year, we'll have to stay constant communication, have constant meetings, have constant engagement. And make sure that everyone's clear on the process that we're taking for this year for any change for next year, despite it happening after school preview time. That may mean adding more preview times later in the spring, in the winter, and making sure we have plenty of opportunity for families to be informed of how they learn about schools and what those options are and what they look like.
I appreciate the the vision for ensuring that there is at least like the year cycle in which families are prepared for that. I will just say that enrollment season is stressful enough within BPS without even having to consider that there may be upcoming changes to your school community. And as a parent, I would be remiss if I didn't state that because it is, it is incredibly challenging. Without even having to consider that this choice might have been a false choice. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you for that. And I think what we're trying to do is make sure we get through the uncomfortable transition period. And then once we get clear of this phase of the work, we'll be in a better predictable cycle, so families can have more time to plan and prepare. So this year, we'll have to grapple with that uncomfortableness until we get to that point. this year we'll have to just grapple with that uncomfortableness um, until we get to that point.
Um, it, uh, sorry, uh, this is the superintendent. Uh, so to, I, I caught the last part of um Sam's piece. I know um, I do want Ana Tavares, who is our Deputy for Family Engagement um, and Community Engagement to just have an opportunity to, to talk about the, the family piece. I think, you know, the, you know, part of, part of what we really need is to get some of the studies back, right? So the spring study, the F, the um, you know, on the facilities condition is a big one for us. I think resetting the process for us and making sure that we had the right stakeholders at the table of the departments to be able to weigh in has been another key piece of why we've chosen to kind of slow up so that we can get this right. And then the third is um, to people's point before, making sure family and community engagement is at the center of this and working across with equity and across with facilities is, is going to be key. So families do have the information they need in order to make change, you know, make choice. So, or make choices. So it, it is um, you know, we're, right now, we're, we're dealing with the stuff that's already been kind of in pipeline that has had some examination, some amount of data. We're hoping to then complement that with additional data that we'll be getting throughout the spring. The anticipation would be, once we start getting those reports back, once we have our process refined that we can actually follow, that's when we can start kind of um, putting more um, of a, a speed to the process. So I think that's why you're, you're sort of seeing us pull back and um, slow up a little bit is to make sure that we get both the process right and we have the data to make an informed decision.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I very much appreciate that. And I'm all for slowing down to get it right. Would hate to see is we slow down to try to get it right. And then we have to speed up right at the end when folks have already been.
Yeah, that's right. Hundred, hundred percent. That's right. So Ana, do you want to just uh, talk for a minute just about like the, the work family and community engagement is doing in this?
Absolutely. Uh, buenas noches to all, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. As uh Superintendent Skipper mentioned, there is, and also um, Ms. Lopera, as you mentioned, there is also the ability for us to slow down, but also to do it in a way that it's purposeful, not slowing down just to slow down, but slowing down to be able to plan more specifically with our families. So I think the, the pieces here that may not be as, as transparent, because we're literally doing it now, is a lot of the work that community engagement folks and they, of course, under the leadership of Chief Snyder, they're really thinking about what ways can we really go out into the community, into the schools, and really talk to those parent and family leaders that really have the concerns that you've already heard this evening. And really engaging with those folks directly, going into the community. Now that we have the ability to be much more in person, that work can be much more robust. And that, those are the pieces that have been missing and that we recognize that we need to do much more. And in some ways, you know, the ability to be on Zoom is, is very um, the, the technology allows us to access one another in a particular way, but it also removes some of that um, the pieces of engagement that are much more within community and by community and with community and in person. And, and those parts of it are the things that we are trying to build on in order to really bring not just the data, because having a conversation on data just for data sake isn't what a lot of the community members have shared with us that they only want. They also want to be visionaries with us. They want to think about what it's going to be in the next few years, understanding that some of the changes will be for the next group of students, not necessarily just their own. And we want to partner with folks to do that work together. And I know that um, you know, Chief Snyder has been doing this work for quite a bit of time here in BPS, and she's going to share a little bit of what, what we've already accomplished and the places where we're going to move forward.
Before we move on to, to Ms. Snyder, I just want to remind everybody about our time. It's already nine eighteen and we still have another full um, presentation to do. So I know that, and we haven't gotten through all of the members having a time to ask their questions. So I just want to, and I know that this is a very critical topic and that we're going to probably need to spend almost a full meeting just discussing this. So I just want us to hold um, to do what is essential for tonight and to put a pin in some of these discussions so that we really can give them the time that they need and not just, you know, little soundbites. But thank you. But I want you to finish your question and then so that we can move on because I've, I've um, reached my own promise of holding people to five minutes and everybody has done double or triple that time just in this first round. So I'm just wanting to be mindful and honest with everyone. So please, please finish. Yes.
Thank, thank you Chair Robinson and Dr. Tavarez. I actually wanted to spend a moment um on the more technical aspect of the question around, um, you know, how do we support families uh, through a choice season if schools may um be shifting or changing in any ways? And one of the things that I think is equally as important as the planning that needs to happen is the transparency around where we stand. And so past practice and um, I think good practice is that uh, whether it's our Discover BPS website, our information sessions, our school preview times, that we're being transparent and indicating when um, when discussions around mergers or changes are taking place. And people understand that this is a school on the move in, in many ways. And I, I don't mean the, the, the prize, but I also mean in the possibilities of of, of um, becoming something new and evolving for families. So that's all I wanted to say is that, you know, we, we value the transparency of information about where our schools stand um, in addition to the conversations about um, helping us be part of that change.
Thank you. Good move on to Mr. Meta and then Ms. Planko Garcia.
Okay, I'm gonna try to be quick. Um, I know everybody said that, but let's, okay, whatever. Um, so on the topic of um, the building renovations slash improvements. Um, I was wondering, do you guys have an idea of like what the, how many minor pro, like, I get that we're ma, how many minor projects there are going to be? Uh, because even because the minor projects are pretty important, uh, even though they're not what's taking center stage at the moment. Because like, the AC working, that definitely helps a lot, like. Yeah, anyway.
That, that is a really good question. Um, we are still, the, the facilities team is still actively working on what, you know, you said minor projects, that those projects don't stop. Um, this is it is ongoing. Um, and we did have, listen, we could definitely provide some more information, but there are a number of projects that they're doing, whether it's the painting project, whether it was a floor project, um, we're, we're trying to do the outdoor um initiative and a, and a few, even the parking lot project. There's a number of, of um, projects that are not as uh, it's not as big as, as the others, but they're just, that's important. Um, so we are, we do have a number of projects that are active. I hope I answered your question the right way, Ms. Meta.
Can I just ask clarifying question?
Yes.
Um, so are those like, I know these are all constantly being like redone, but are like those happening, I would assume those are happening at a much more frequent scale, right?
Totally. Yes, there. And I, and we could definitely provide you with a little bit more detail. I see my, my, the, the CEO turned on her camera. Is there anything else you want to add? Teresa to Mr. Meta's time question?
Sure, we can provide a report from Asset Essentials that talks about what work is ongoing. And we can also get an update on the district initiatives and their progress to date uh, in much more detail to the committee, so that you have real clarity on what's happening. And the Asset Essentials is the work order request system that we can show you what kind of reoccurring um um, infrastructure needs are being done by the Facilities Department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Planko Garcia.
Gracias, Madam Chair. Estoy escuchando aquí que puede haber cambios.
I'm listening here that changes can be made.
Entonces hemos tenido en todo este proceso muchas familias que han venido a testificar anteriormente.
We have had in this process families who have been here testifying.
Maestros y estudiantes también.
Teachers and students as well.
Entonces hay una comunidad que ha sido eh, bien enfática en esperar respuesta como la Club, Russo, la Summer, la Taylor, la Chao.
So there are all those schools mentioned um, that have been awaiting a response.
Entonces es importante que nuestras familias esta noche que han estado esperando puedan entender que puede haber cambios dentro del plan, como lo estaba especific, lo estaban especificando ustedes. Me gustaría que pudieran decirnos, eh, pudieran repetir que pueden haber cambios, que esto no es absoluto. Tomando en cuenta el impacto que va a tener y tomando en cuenta que vamos a escuchar a la comunidad antes de tomar una decisión final.
So I would like to, um, I think it's important for our families tonight to hear, if you could repeat, that changes can be made and depending on the impact and that they feel like they're being listened to.
I don't know if uh, Dr. Tavares has seen it on your camera, but are we talking, and I, this for clarity purposes, are we talking about the, the construction projects or are we talking about in general um of all the different projects? Just want to have some clarity in the question.
Estamos hablando de los proyectos en general, los proyectos que van a afectar a las escuelas que se van a fusionar.
Um, I'm talking about the projects in general that are going to affect the schools that are merging.
I don't know if I wish, keep the peanut.
I think.
I'm trying to, go ahead, Superintendent.
Sure, thanks, India. I, I think um, I think the, how I'm interpreting the question is that um, given where we are in the merges that we've sent the letters out, that we are about to have the community meetings. I think what we heard from the families earlier is that they want the community meetings to be a real dialogue about what's possible and not with like a foregone conclusion that they're just continuing to be informed. So I think maybe Kayla could answer, you know, and talk a little bit about um, what the goals are at those meetings to make sure that family voices are heard and that information can be shared with them so that they can be part of the decision making and, and suggestions.
Yes, that is, there you go. Hey, Kayla.
Sorry. So the goal of those meetings, uh, again, is to be, it's a collaborative effort um, to provide as much transparency as possible and to ensure that there's equity in the process. Um, it is an opportunity for us to hear from those families, uh, their thoughts and their feelings about the process. To also bring that information back, uh, to see their leadership. Um, and to have further dialogue about concerns that families may have about the merger conversations. Um, beyond the merger conversations, there will be an opportunity for families to engage, those communities to engage in some design, uh, a design process where they'll have an opportunity to really uh, envision what they want their schools to look like. And that decision will not come from us, but they will have the opportunity to make the decision about what schools uh, would look like going forward for them.
And if I could just add to that briefly, uh, what we have to kind of um, navigate through in the discussions are when school communities are some, are not in favor of uh, merger conversations, they may not want to have those discussions. Then in those situations, we provide options for, to prompt the conversation, discussions and dialogue. But regardless, we want it to be an organic design of what the community feels, what the school community um, would like to see or not see, and then have them develop options for us to bring back to this body.
Ms. Garcia, if you, you finished? Okay. Um, just checking, um, I know Mr. O'Neil hasn't had a chance to speak. Um, just checking with him to see if he has any questions at the moment.
No, Madam Chair, as you said, it has been a robust discussion. It's the first of what will be many discussions on this topic. Um, and I think a lot of good points have been raised. I particularly want to thank Chief Irish and Ms. Alvarez for uh, their work on this. This is a perfect example of cross collaboration between departments within the city. And so um, thank, thank them for their time and I look forward to continued conversations on this in future meetings.
We, we appreciate your, your comment, Mr. Neil. I just want to mention that Chief Irish lost connection in City Hall and he was trying to reconnect. I'm not sure if he was able to come back on. But that's why we don't see him.
Yeah, we could tell that beautiful cement wall behind him. So, uh, but I really appreciate the cross collaboration on this. And I know the beginning of a long effort, both by the city and the district and the school committee on these issues. Thank you.
Great. Um, it's nine thirty now and I, I see that both Mr. Meta and Mr. Cardette Hernandez have their hands raised. Are your questions something that can be held to our next meeting or written? Or do you feel that you want to be able to um, raise them right now? Mr. Meta?
Mine was just still up from earlier, if I'm being honest.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
I can, I, no, I, I would just, mine is more of just a comment and I'll be super brief. I'm just
Okay.
wondering, as we're talking about engagement, and this can be part of a, a longer conversation later. I, I, I just hear two sort of like conflicting um priorities and I, I wonder if that's where sometimes the confusion lies for communities, like are you curious about uh, the sort of creativity of a, a community in design? Or are there guardrails that a community needs to be thinking about? And that's, I think, where it always goes back to a master plan, like I have to know that I'm engaging um in a process that is connected to a much larger either neighborhood vision or city vision. And I worry that sometimes in our engagement, it's either we're telling you what's happening or we're curious about what you want and we're missing this opportunity to say, this is what the city needs in this neighborhood with these X number of schools. And then we can start getting creative around what that looks like. And I think that that is often the part that is missing. Maybe some of this data uh, and analysis will give us that, but I think it has to be part of a very sort of needy and robust way of presenting a, a, a system-wide vision for a neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cardet Hernandez. You know, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly that that, for me, has been part of the concern as well, because it feels like people want input into something that is amorphous at this moment. And uh, and my question, and I'm, I, I don't need answers to my questions tonight, but I have a couple. One is um, what's our vision for? How long is this plan needing to last? So our families may be in our schools for anywhere from two to six years. But are we planning for the next twenty-five years for these buildings? And how do we help people have that broader vision? But what I may want immediately may not be what the future needs to have and how do we balance that? Is one question. Another question is, where will we get a clear definition of what we mean by a twenty-first century school? And how will we know that when we are, you know, I guess, what, what must be um, gained in a merger? To make it a viable twenty-first century school? You know, and will we be able to create that vision in the things that we are merging? And then, and again, my last question will be, how long between the review and the renovation? You know, so that these things are in real time and manageable for families to to feel that their input makes sense for what that, you know, what they're going to get in the end. So I know we don't have time for those things tonight, but I just hope that as we have our next conversations, we can get, we can get some clarity around some of these things. around some of these things so that when we say 21st century schools, we all know what we're talking about and, and understand that that's what our goal is or how that can be our goal. Okay. So for tonight, I want to say thank you all, um, for this partnership. This is, you know, truly, uh, a, a major piece for a district that we've not done for the last fifty, seventy-five years or more. I graduated over fifty-five years ago and some of the very schools that I went to that were inadequate in the nineteen fifties are still some of our schools today. You know, they weren't 20th century schools. And now, you know, some of them are still not functioning. I mean, and we love these buildings, but we owe it to all of our children. At this point in time, we've given them a pandemic, so let's now try to give them something positive by really working hard to make sure that the schools and the programs that they get really will prepare them for their future, which we don't know what it's going to be, but we know that they need better skills and better environments to do it. I say to Mr. Meta all the time, every time I mention his school, he goes to the Arts Academy. Um, there's a big smile that comes over his face about, you know, just what it feels like to be in a caring, loving, appropriate environment, um, makes you feel better. And, and that's what we want all of our kids to have. So, so thank you again for your incredible leadership on this very, very difficult, but very, very important topic. And I hope that we can talk and maybe, um, come up with a plan. You know, it may be a, a different kind of school committee meeting, but a time that we really can have a more full discussion around these issues, because I know all of our members have many, many, many more clarifying questions they would like to ask and would like to create in a time when we could actually have that conversation. So thank you. Yes. Yes, Superintendent?
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, so just, just a couple of, uh, points. I, you know, I think, um, I think the goal of bringing up the Green New Deal and familiarizing everyone with it, um, on regular meetings is so that we don't have the situation where everything kind of has to come to bear in a meeting, but rather be able to continue to update in a, as the thinking evolves. I think coming into this, you know, fresh, um, you know, we're caught a little bit in this tension of, um, a declining in enrollment, um, a, a recognition that, um, a, a recognition that, that for some of our students in buildings that are not conducive to just the basic academic programming, they're not getting what they need. And in the overall system, a stretch of soft dollar money that is actually diluting resource for all schools. And so there is a sense of urgency to the work at the same time that the key is we have to be as thoughtful and informed as possible in the process. And so this is why this is probably one of the most complex things that we need to do. Um, we do need to do it with that sense of urgency with the community. We do need to have it be transparent with equity at heart. Um, but, um, we may not have all the data in a perfect world that is going to be the longitudinal that we all would like to have. So I think this is going to be some trade-offs in the process as we go through it. That's, that's my sense of it coming into it, new and looking at it. I think in a very short amount of time, in a month, we've been able to pull together, I think, a supportive group of folks, um, that have each entity, uh, different pieces of information to work with our city partners. And, you know, just, you know, to, for, you know, for Indy and Chief Irish, I think, um, you know, that, that piece has been really important because it's taking it out of just the facility realm and it's actually making this what it really is, which is, um, you know, about, about what, what is our school plan and vision, uh, long-term, um, you know, in, in BPS. So, um, I appreciate the, the depth of the questions the committee's asking. Um, I do want to make this a more regular conversation. Um, I know that, you know, um, a committee member, O'Neil, Vice Chair O'Neil, you know, kind of pointed that out and said, this is like the first of many and it will be. Um, but I think for us to do due diligence on it, we have to make it more of a regular update, um, not one that happens like every four months or six months or a year kind of thing. So, um, just appreciate the committee's deep thinking on it and the public comments from earlier, um, from our families and our parents as well. Um, Chair, I wanted to, to know, um, uh, our human capital, uh, department has put a tremendous amount of work into their presentation. It is also, um, extensive and, um, and I think that there will be quite a few questions, um, as there should be about it. And so, um, I need your guidance. Do you think, um, we should continue with it given the time? Or would you like us to, um, to consider putting it on next school committee's agenda and reworking that agenda?
Um, I would say, knowing that, I think we got the final updates very late this afternoon and I'm not sure how much time people had to, um, do, deal with it, to read it, um, and that we are having a meeting next week. I think, um, we could, you know, I, and I'll leave it to the committee. We can have a vote on this. I would think postponing it till next week and having people really have some time to really dig deep into this and, you know, really take it in would be more appropriate. It's nine thirty, almost ten o'clock and, um, many of us have had a very long day, starting at seven this morning, out and about for breakfast. So, um, you know, is, what is the sense of the committee? Do we want to take a vote?
Postpone.
Postpone?
Motion.
All those in favor of postponing till next week? Can you give me a thumbs up or? So what am I saying? Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think we're there. Yes.
Okay.
So I think we'll take more time to, um, to review it and, um, and then, and start out with that. Yes.
That's great.
And please, and Superintendent, please send the gratitude, our gratitude to the team because it means they waited till nine forty-one to not present. It's like they got saved by the bell, but also they waited around. So thank you for that.
Very much, very much appreciate that. And I, and I know that they're incredibly proud, um, of their work, you know, um, Chief Catchings and her staff. And so I just want to make sure that we give it the respect it deserves.
Yes.
So I appreciate the committee's, um, willingness to, to be able to put it to next week.
Yes. All righty. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Catchings, did you want to say anything before we close out?
No. No, thank you all and I'll see you next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, um, we'll move on to public comments or reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you Chair. We have no speakers or public comments on reports.
All righty. Thank you. Is there any new business? No new business tonight, um, but, um, that concludes our business for this evening. But our next virtual school committee meeting will take place next Wednesday on November second at five PM. So thank you. Thank you for a very robust conversation, um, and ready for next week's. And so if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Planko Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.